Um, thank y'all for tuning in to this live show. We're going on the Denver City Council meeting. For January thirteenth, this is my birthday week. My C day is on Thursday. So please send our donations to jaharis45@gmail.com.
Thank you for your patience as I provide instructions in Spanish. Hola a todos, mi nombre es Alejandro Arias. So we're January thirteenth. The president is the interpreter of the Spanish in the day of hoy. Estoy trabajando junto con mi colega Sam Guzman. Si usted prefiere escuchar en español y está aquí virtualmente en Zoom, verá un icono de raque una parte inferior a mano derecha a su pantalla. Ese es el icono de la interpretación. Si no ve la interpretación ahí, puede buscar bajo el menú con los tres puntitos que dice más. Si usted se encuentra presencialmente y quiere escuchar en español, por favor de ir con los asistentes que se encuentran al fondo de la cámara y a mano derecha donde le darán unos audífonos para poder escuchar la interpretación. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the general public comment session of January thirteenth. Before convening the regular meeting, city council provides a half hour general public comment session to hear from the public on city matters, except for any matter that are scheduled to have a public hearing. To maximize time for public comments, council will not offer comments or responses from the dais. Council members staff may conduct, may contact speakers following their comment if they raised matters that lend themselves to follow up. All speakers should begin their name, should begin by stating their names. Each person will have three minutes to speak. For those participating in person when called upon, please come to the podium. The timer on the presentation monitor will display your time remaining. For those participating virtually when called upon, please wait until you are promoted to speaker. When you accept the promotion, turn on your camera and your microphone. You will see the timer on your screen. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech, direct your comments to council as a whole, and refrain from individual or personal attacks, including disparaging others. First up, we have Linda Badman in the council chambers. Linda? Next up, we have Maria Alicia in the council chambers.
Please bear with me, council members, I am vision impaired, so it's a little difficult. Esteemed council, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Maria Alicia, and I'd like to share my lived experience in a vulnerable, in a vulnerable community where drug use was normalized. I've lost four family members through drug addiction. Our motto is a champion to be compassionate resulted.
Unless you're my family, I'm lying. I'm human, who talks about them lying. I don't think the council is lying, I don't know.
As a result, I'm a devoted advocate for the Latino and other vulnerable communities. I'm asking you to vote no. And five, four, one, seven, nine, one, version two. With a yes vote, you are abdicating your responsibilities. You now have legislative power and spending power. With a yes vote, you are giving away your authority to the executive branch. The current executive has already proven irritated by planning, spending, and acting without informing you. If this acting manager does something that can damage the community, your best best vote on this initiative removes your ability to rectify the situation. I'm also a member of the Good Neighbor Committee for the La Paz Micro Community Shelter, which was placed in a marginalized community. I will tell you that the Good Neighbor Agreement, agreements do not protect the citizens near the chaos. Many of the safety suggestions from the committee members have been rejected. Recently, our elderly Overland Park neighbor was shot in her own home and is now paralyzed for life. There is a thorough plan for rolling out safe injection sites in Denver, likely in marginalized communities. You should retain your power to create legislation that addresses that plan very specifically and in a controlled manner. Instead of giving carte blanche to the executive branch, which suppresses your ability to help your constituents, I urge you to vote no. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lisa Cardiff, virtually. If you could please accept the promotion, Lisa?
I hope y'all can hear me.
Can you hear me? We can. Go ahead. Thank you.
Yes, this is Lisa Cardiff. I live in District Six. I want to discuss the expansion of safe um, injection sites. Um, despite all our, uh, the Denver City Council's current um, efforts to decrease or address drug use, our, um, our drug use continues to grow. Instead of focusing on rehabbing, it seems like we're concentrating on reducing the bad health outcomes of these people. These people, and it's doing nothing to improve the quality of life of actual citizens who are having to live in the chaos that has resulted in drug use and crime increasing in Denver. Um, I think expanding this when it to areas nearby schools, there's absolutely no reason to do this. Um, I wanted to just address some other cities that have done this. One is Vancouver, who's been doing this for a long time now. And they are now, instead of just doing safe injection sites, they are now involuntarily committing over twenty thousand drug addicts a year. Um, so I, we can kind of see long term where this is gonna go. It's not gonna help our cities become uh, more stable or less prime. Also, in Toronto, they experienced a two hundred and fifty percent increase in crimes. And now they have actually closed them near schools. So now that we're doing the exact opposite or proposing to do the exact opposite of what Toronto, um, did, and they're reversing course. So I would ask the city council to please, um, not expand these in marginalized communities and in areas near schools where children have to be witness to these. I mean, I already drive down the streets and see people injecting drugs, for example, near my house on I twenty-five in Yale. And my children like, ask what it is. I just think we need a solution to this drug problem beyond just adding safe inject, promoting further drug use. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Shannon Swaro on Zoom. Shannon, can you please accept the promotion?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Um, yes, thank you for your time today. Um, I appreciate what the council is debating with this topic because drug use is a serious problem in Denver. Um, public drug use is a big problem. Um, and the policy in theory of expanding these injection sites sounds good and noble. But shielding our youngest and most innocent citizens in their vulnerable state of being young adults, young people, should be a priority over the drug users of our society. Exposing children and toddlers to drug use does not benefit them. While this may benefit our hardcore drug users in the, in our city, it does not benefit our children to expose them to this behavior. It is detrimental to them and desensitizes them to drug use. The result could very well makes them future drug users. It is well documented that these drugs cause psychotic and violent episodes. How many children will be victimized? Families and children will be victimized by the clients of safe injection sites. I know that young preteens on the way home from school, will they have access to these sites, walking by them? You know, making drug use convenient for children is not a function of government. And you should be shielding from, from this, from this depravity. And I know that there are children and young teens using them, using these sites in other cities like Vancouver. So I just wanna wrap this up and say that prioritizing drug users over children of our city is a grim future for our society. And I'm begging you not to degrade our safety in the future, in the future of the city any further and allow the crimes and the victimization that will surely follow the expanded use and of these injection sites.
Funny how they want to put the injection site.
As well to vote no on this proposal.
Being criminalized for, uh,
Thank you.
this drug usage.
Next up, we have Flanders.
They don't want to say crack houses.
On Zoom, Flanders, can you please accept the promotion?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I've come to speak in front of city council many times in the last year. I haven't been there recently. Um, for many reasons, one of the main ones being that I no longer feel safe, uh, in that building. The police often threaten us and the city council members do not pay attention to us and they are often on their phones. They're on their computers and I'm not convinced that they actually see this, uh, public input as a opportunity to listen to the public, but more like a thirty minute window to suffer through every week and try to hear as little as possible. I'm on here mostly to talk about Palestine, as we've been talking about. The city council has refused to approve a ceasefire resolution. Um, and now, over a year later, we are still seeing the most horrific genocide that I have witnessed in my five time. Um, now we've been told over and over again, this is not a local issue. Um, I don't agree with that, but even under that pretext, um, we now have an extremely important local aspect of this issue, which is that Denver is actually buying Israeli bonds. Um, and of course contributing to companies such as Lockheed Martin, Raytheon, are directly contributing to the genocide in Gaza. Our friend, uh, Dr. Christian, who has spoken in front of you before in, is in Gaza right now on a two week medical mission. He is risking his own life and safety to try to help people. And yet you are democratically elected representatives, have done absolutely nothing, and it's shameful. Last week, they had a speech where a lot of people came in and read a statement, and I wish I could have been there. Uh, but as I said, I feel comfortable attending these chambers in person. And so I'm here to echo that statement last week. Um, please do more. Please look into the Denver investment in Israeli bonds. This is tantamount to investing in bonds from Nazi Germany. And more and more international, uh, humanitarian organizations and monitors have said that this is a genocide and that we are breaking both US and international law by continuing to fund Israel.
And come on here.
I didn't know that we, that you were debating the safe injection sites. Um, but as having heard these other speakers, I would just like to say that anybody who is against harm prevention of safe injection sites has absolutely no idea what they're talking about, has never, um, experienced addiction or known anyone who's experienced addiction. Um, harm, harm reduction is an extremely important aspect of actually reducing drug use. And allowing people to have safe injection sites is preventing people from spreading disease, preventing people from getting sick, from being violent, from having to steal supplies. Um, and just shielding your children from the realities of the world is not effective because, believe it or not, they're gonna find out one way or the other. And wouldn't you rather actually tell your children the truth about what's happening instead of waiting until they're older and finding out through the wrong means? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Heidi Robinson on Zoom. Heidi, can you please accept the promotion?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, first of all, I do talk to my children about this issue, but going to school is not where they need to stay. I am against removing the cap on needle distribution sites and removing the thousand foot barrier van near schools and daycares in Denver. We should not normalize or enable drug use, and it's not okay for our children and parents who are taking their children to school to see this on the daily. The logic behind reducing the stigma of drug use is ludicrous. This is not the way to do it, and it won't help. It will only expose our children needlessly to drugs and drug usage and may in fact have the opposite effect and cause our younger generation to try drugs by increasing their exposure and by normalizing drug use. I also have basic safety and cost concerns for our city. How is this being paid for? Are our Denver taxpayer dollars being used for this? This epidemic needs to be addressed from the root versus enabling the drug user and allowing them to do that in closer proximity to schools and daycares. This should not be a function of our government to sanction drug use. The drug problem has only gotten worse in Denver. You need to take a different approach versus going all in on what's not working. And I ask why, city council member Watson, you ran against policies like this but are now voting yes?
Heidi, please, please refer to the whole entire body. Do call out one council member, please. Thank you.
Constituents want you to vote no, and I will ask you all to vote no on this bill. Our city and leaders need to take a stronger stance against drug use, and this is doing the absolute opposite. Denver is a total mess and only going downhill. Thank you.
Next up, we have Christian Jones on Zoom. Christian, can you please accept the promotion?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Um, I urge all, all city council members, um, to vote no on the expansion of the safe injection sites, no matter, no matter where they are. And I echo the previous speakers in that these, these sites don't seem to be working. I am familiar with drug addiction, and the best thing for these people would be rehab. And I, my kids have for years seen the effect of legalized marijuana, all these safe injection sites and the people hanging out outside of them. I do not think this is the answer for Denver. I urge you to vote no and consider all the citizens, not just the drug users, when you are voting. I do not think that this is the answer to our problems. Drugs just make everything worse. And yes, I understand these people do have issues, but let's spend the money elsewhere. Um, as previous speakers said, we have examples in other cities, um, specifically Vancouver, Toronto, and they have not been successful. And I wanna see, how do we know it's been successful here in Denver? I've not seen that at all. Um, again, please consider all citizens when voting on this. Our, our, our kids do see this every day. They see the effects of this. They see it on the ground. It's in the parks. It's everywhere we drive around Denver. So again, I urge you to vote no, please. Thank you.
Next up, on Zoom, we have Carrie Krambeck. Carrie, can you please accept the promotion? Carrie, are you on Zoom?
I have accepted it. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, to echo some of the sentiments that have already been said, drug use continues to grow in Denver. There is no reason to have these exchange centers near school sites. We are simply inviting more chaos and more crime, none of which is controlled. It is unpredictable what might occur at these sites. Children do not need to have more exposure to this sort of behavior or this sort of, um, they are young, they are impressionable. Uh, their future should be our primary focus. This is basic safety, and it's our responsibility as a society to make that a priority. Normalizing drug use is not prioritizing our youth. This is irresponsible and should not be part of our tax, taxpayer dollars. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ashley Garrett. Ashley, you're on the phone. If you can please accept the promotion, you have to hit star six to unmute.
For January thirteenth, Monday, January thirteenth.
Hello, um, I'm here trying to speak for the people and for change. And in the next week, we are going to have a new president. And that president has targeted our city, our city, which is held as a sanctuary city, and that I believe is why I am here. Because right now, we are either going to be the change that the world needs, are they hope? Because that is what we need. Believe it or not, that is what God is asking us to do. It's our choice to decide how this world gets to turn out. We need to take a stand with our city. We need to focus on what is really needed, and what needs to change is the money. They threatened the money with you guys, and I have said at a previous time when I came to you guys, and I told you guys, go for broke. The money is what needs to change. We should not have money dictating the kind of care that our planet gets, that our people get. It is time, and that is what changes. These people's lives matter. And, and right now, this is the time where we stand up for the better of the world. No more allowing money to not allow us to do what's right to our planet. We are killing our planet off because of how we live, because it costs too much to do what's right. That is what needs to change, and I really, really hope that the government will talk about that and, and stand for that because that is what is needed. Our cities, it's, it's damned if you do, damned if you don't, pardon the expression, but I'm like, helping the people, it is it is so hard to get all of the people happy. All of these people, that's what the system needs to serve, the people as a whole. I understand people don't wanna see people using drugs, but you guys have your children in your arms. You guys can teach your kids to not, to do better. What about these kids that I have personally met? While I've been on the streets, that are young, that don't have families, that love them, that admittedly told me that they don't have, that they're just waiting for trains to derail. I'm serious. That is true. That is a true statement. These kids, that is where they are headed. And like, our system changes right now, and that starts with the immigrants that are just changing our doors. And you guys are doing right. You guys have helped with the needy, and I want you guys to know that. You guys have started helping the homeless. You guys started moving them inside as best as you could with money, um, moving weight. But it is time that we take a stand for a change. And I'm telling you, that is where to that. I hope it's your things of good fortune and good health and, and wealth to not only our families, but our neighbors, our neighbors close and afar.
Thank you, Ashley.
I hope.
Next up, we have Molly Lamar.
Thank you.
Molly? No Molly? Next up, we have Brandy Socom. Brandy? No Brandy? Next up, we have Ty Bell Doc. Bell Doc in Chambers? Ty? Ty on Zoom? Okay, can we please remove Ty?
Yes, I'm right here. Thank you.
Can you hear me? We can. Go ahead. Thank you.
Um, hello, councilmen, uh, councilpeople today. Um, I would like to address the council and ask for your assistance in obtaining a copy of the permit that allows for the closure of the twenty-nine-hundredth block in Rhino. Myself and several neighbors have reached out to the executive director of the Rhino Arts District. We've reached out to the director of the Business Improvement District. We've reached out to Amy Ford. We've reached out to Justin Rinaldi, and we've reached out to Jay Decker. And to date, we have been unable to obtain a permit. This past Friday, we delivered a hundred and twenty-two petitions from businesses and that surround the closure, voicing their support for reopening this block. The closure creates a very dangerous intersection and is basically an eyesore. It has no support from the community and only benefits four businesses on the closure to the detriment of dozens from thirtieth through thirty-fifth. Recently, the bid issued a statement saying that no funding is budgeted for the closure in twenty-twenty-five. And thus, the reason the street was an ice rink this past Wednesday due to no snow removal on the closure. Please, please let us know if there is a valid permit, because if there is not, this street should be reopened immediately in order to serve the businesses that are hurting on Lammert. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Kalib Hogan on Zoom. Kalib?
Great, thank you. Hold up. I, I was gonna tell you, you did not mention the name of this.
Hello?
I'll be talking Lammert, damn it.
Um, Kalib? Hogan? Event producer, do we have that person? Nope. Next up, we have Jared, Jeremy on Ladino, Bondino, in the council chambers. Jeremy? Next up, we have Callie Whitelaw. Virtually, Callie, are you on Zoom? Can you accept the promotion? We have no Callie. Do we have David Hardo on Zoom? No David? Do we have Ryan Simbowski in person?
Good afternoon. Um, I was hoping to ask you guys if you could explain to my son how this bill, um, to expand needle exchanges that would allow them to be within a thousand feet of a daycare or school would benefit him? Sounds like you guys aren't gonna answer that question. Wanted to ask it. I also want you all to think back to your time in grade school and high school. I know that I'm a little closer to those times than many of you may be. But I'm wondering if you could honestly say, you know what would have helped me learn and develop? A needle exchange and a congregation of illicit drug users next to my school. This last point here is gonna be more of a what's gonna happen, not a, uh, not a question to answer. But Denver's already on the road of disinvestment. Councilwoman Torres, you mentioned earlier the, uh,
Sir, can you please address the whole council? Thank you.
Yes, just addressing a comment that Councilwoman Torres made about the ADU zoning.
Please address the whole council. Don't call out one council person.
Man, they kill me with that bullshit.
I was planning on building a garage and an ADU on my property. I'm no longer planning to do that. Why would I? When I get home forty minutes from now, all the trash from the dumpsters will be strewn about the alley. There will be people smoking meth and fentanyl in the alley behind my home. And I'll likely have to be cleaning up human excrement tonight. This is what's gonna happen next. People are gonna get tired of it. I'm tired of it. My neighbors are tired of it. We're hoping to leave the city. The tax base erodes, jobs leave, more people leave, businesses leave. You will be on the path to a post-industrial Midwest economic crisis. All for prioritizing people's ability to smoke meth on the street and enforcing, refusing to enforce single law. I urge you to vote no on legislation, uh, bill twenty-four dash seventeen ninety-one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Laura Gonzalez on Zoom. We have no Laura. Next up, we have Megan Zucker on Zoom. Megan, can you please promote, accept the promotion? Megan?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Just one second. I wanna comment about your harm reduction vote that you're about to do with the needle exchange program. Where you live is a direct reflection of the morality of the people who are leading you. Go walk around your town. Go to any city park. They have been handed over entirely to homeless criminal migrants with needles sticking to their arms. Knives, firearms, drugs, and machetes are often part of the package. They relieve themselves on our streets, they leave their trash strewn about, and they often light fires. Per your own admission, they are mentally ill or drug addicts, but usually both. As such, these people are dangerous precisely because they are unpredictable. Crime comes with a territory. This is a question of morality. The leaders of the city make a decision. They choose the direction the city goes in. So I ask you, who is it for? Harm reduction for who? You can only choose one. The moms and the dads and the kids, or the violent homeless junkies? These two groups. These two groups cannot coexist. Denver will be totally controlled by one of these groups and you, the city leaders, choose which one. You have the power to support one over the other, you have the power to want one over the other. I'm asking you to seriously think about which group you want to promote in Denver before you vote to expand and remove the restriction of needle exchange programs in a thousand feet of schools and daycare centers, places for children and families. Please vote no.
Thank you. Our last speaker of the night will be Paula Rollins. Paula, are you here?
My name is Paula Rollins and I'm really not sure how to do this. I hesitated coming here. We're discussing things like helping others or having these needle sites and I'm just a mom of seven kids with a disability, five of them have disabilities. And we're asking just to keep five service animals. I'm sitting here like I don't know if I'm in the right place to get support, but my family is literally under scrutiny and where I'm listening to people wanna give drugs out. Can I have my service animals in order to parent, in order to send my kids to school? So they can be there, I'm under truancy because we lost a service animal. And now I have animal control at my house, walking through my house every other time they feel like it. Just because I have five service animals who are qualified, I've given all paperwork, all doctor's notes and I'm listening to this and I'm like, I'm just a mom trying to prevent my kids to going to drugs from the injuries they have. You saw me have more kids in here earlier, each with a disability, one with a brain injury, one with ODD that I have to watch if he's within a fifteen-foot eye radius without these animals. I can't parent without these animals. My kids don't go to school, they don't have a normal life, the boy that you saw in here, he has a brain injury from our house being broken into and my kids being raped. I'm here as a mom begging and giving my information out because when I went to the police, when I went to animal control, when I begged them to stop, when my son almost jumped out of a window and he's four and it was more important to tell me, give me your animals and my kids are screaming because they don't understand what's happening and I'm listening again to people needing needles and needing sites, what about children who need things like safety, if they're animals? Something normal, something normal and I'm under attack for this. When this gentleman just left, we clean up poop and needles, I've had three tickets because I have D I D. It's hard for me to even leave my home without my animal and someone poisoned and killed my last one. Another one is sitting in the pound right now because she was stolen off of my four-year-old daughter and I'm under scrutiny because of that also and they won't even let my mother take her. What is the attack? I'm a single mom and I'm asking for help constantly. They have, I've paid eight hundred dollars just to keep an animal safe in the shelter because they don't wanna release or give the judge the word to say something. Then I have my four that I had to replace and one traveling one and I'm under scrutiny for that and they're trying to take that. Where do I get support? Where do I fall in or kids like this fall in and we're talking about needles? We're talking about needles and if we wanna really talk about it, the person who broke in my home was on drugs. The person who raped my children was on drugs and no one even batted an eye. I still have a daughter right now who's autistic, who was raped because people can use drugs wherever they want to use them. That's one thing I'm not gonna get in on, but I will say I need my animals to parent because the people who did this were on drugs and I'm here left trying to fix children who have been under rape and if no one believes me, go look at the records because I wouldn't say this without it being true.
Thank you so much for your public comment, Paula.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our general public comment session. If we did not get to you today, please join us next week or submit your comments in writing. The next session will be held on Monday, January twentieth. Sign up begins at five P M on Thursday, January sixteenth. We look forward to hearing from you again and thank you for attending. Stay at reconvene, the Denver City Council meeting.
Continue their dialogue from earlier about the safe injection sites. And they're gonna vote on whether they're gonna approve them. And on the feed of schools and daycares.
City Council will now reconvene from our earlier session. We have unfinished business on council bill ordinance twenty-four seventeen ninety-one amending Article Five, Chapter twenty-four of the Denver Revised Municipal Code to remove a certain limitation applicable to needle exchange and treatment referral programs. At what who? We still have several members in the queue. Next up, we have Protagonero Campbell.
Thank you, Madam President. I think, uh, listening, uh, to the comments before and through general public comment, it makes me think, you know, multiple things can be true. I'm just gonna acknowledge that was a very heavy last public comment.
Yeah, it was.
So I'm a little bit, I'm trying to find where I'm gonna go in my notes. But I'll just make this, um, quick. I have had a chance and I, to visit the Harm Reduction Center and I really appreciate the work that you do, Lisa. I think it's the gold standard, we've talked about that, you and your staff, um, and really tremendous. Um, I also wanna ground that this conversation isn't about removing, um, a needle exchange program. I think that, you know, the data's there and we've talked about it, that this is incredibly valuable to our city and this is incredibly valuable to our community. Um, and for that, I think that we need to continue. What we are voting on tonight is looking at a removal of a cap and also a distance requirement. And I'm not opposed to removal of a cap, we know that there is a need out there. And where I think I heard Councilwoman, uh, Sawyer talk about, you know, there might be other additional organizations, I know this isn't a money-making proposition and it's tough work. Being in the nonprofit field and having done, you know, uh, a variety of different programs and after-school programs, it's tough work just even when dealing with kids in after-school. So I really commend you with the, um, with the type of work, um, that you have chosen and so passionately do. That also being said, we're talking about distance requirements as well and that's going from a thousand to not having any distance requirement and that is where I have really, um, that's where my issue is of where are we, um, placing, um, future sites, uh, within, uh, childcare and elementary, middle schools and high schools. And I don't think that we have found a middle, maybe it's not a thousand, but I also don't think it's zero. And so, um, for that, I'm gonna be a no on this tonight and keeping it short. I know we've had a lot of comment, um, on both sides and I think that this is one, one thing that really sticks out to me is, um, we are providing a lot of information, everyone who's speaking tonight and this shouldn't be the only point of education that we have. I think that we as a city have a lot of work to do to educate our communities and not just one part of our city or one community, but really, I think, across the board and have a robust dialogue and conversation about this. I think it is about changing, um, you know, and having people understand, there were also things that were said that were, um, misinformed, we are not talking about, uh, safe injection sites. And so to have those conversations combined is really unfortunate because I think what we're talking about is making sure that people have access to, um, to ways that they can, um, be served with addiction, right? With that being said, again, I'm gonna be a no tonight, but I really wanna be able to continue this conversation. I think it's not only, um, here with my colleagues, but I also think it's with the broader community. So thank you, Madam President.
Next up, we have Councilwoman Gonzalez Gutierrez.
Thank you, um, Madam President. I wanna start off by thanking our public health experts. Thank you for providing guidance on this policy and utilizing your expertise to ensure we are proposing good public health policy. Just like we follow hot public health professionals, doctors and public health experts when they advise us on ways to stop the spread of COVID nineteen, we are listening to you today. When it comes to thirty years of evidence and research that syringe access programs are proven practice as cited from the Centers for Disease Control Prevention, the same organization who advised us during COVID, the COVID nineteen pandemic. To the twenty-twenty-one White House model law that we heard earlier from one of our colleagues that explicitly states that counties should not be permitted to place any limitation on the location of syringe access programs. I wanna address some of the comments made by my colleagues and, and just to be clear, this does not shift the responsibilities to our R N Os. It is still the responsibility of our Department of Public Health and Environment to oversee, to field complaints and address issues of compliance, not on the residents of the neighborhood. It was a way, the, the reason that this language was included because it is a way to ensure there is an authentic community engagement process and that there's a feedback loop for community members. The way that we see happen at some of these sites, we wanted to ensure that it's happening across the board. It's also evident that our own Denver Public Health and Environment reported in the twenty-twenty-three Syringe Access Program Needs Assessment Recommendation to support policy initiatives to reduce barriers to services. I really appreciate the fact that my colleagues agree that, yes, programming will not go away. But what we've heard and, and what we have evidence of is that we are wanting to introduce policy initiatives to reduce barriers to services. It is recommended that D D P H E propose to the Denver Mayor's Office and the City Council an amendment of City Ordinance Section twenty-four one fifty-seven to remove the limit on the number of needle exchange and treatment referral programs that can operate in Denver, that's the caps. The limit was established in two thousand and eleven and since then, evidence, since then, evidence has proven that syringe access programs effectively reduce the spread of HIV and HCV, prevent drug overdose deaths and do not increase illegal drug use or crime in the area. The efficacy of syringe access programs in supporting the public health needs of people who use drugs partially depends on accessibility and consistent use of the programs. The people who regularly use syringe access programs are more likely to report seeking treatment for a substance use issue and reduced or discontinued injection drug use compared to people who use injectable drugs who do not regularly use syringe access programs. Additionally, it is recommended that D D P H E propose removing the requirement for fixed sites to operate a thousand feet from schools. D D P H E proposed removing the requirement for fixed sites to operate a thousand feet from schools. Research shows that buffer zone policies like this impose significant barriers to access to harm reduction services and exacerbate negative health outcomes among people who use injectable drugs. Removing the limit of the number of syringe access programs in the buffer zone would eliminate barriers for participants needing access to resources and barriers for providers actively responding to the community's needs by providing life-saving support and services. These are the facts. As we heard from the Office of the Medical Examiner when they presented this in, in our policy in safety, presented this policy in committee and also we had the medical examiner come to safety committee and present on drug overdose deaths, um, over the many years and most recently this last year. Drug overdoses, overdoses have more than doubled since two thousand and eighteen and we still do not have the full count for two thousand and twenty-four, but as of December twenty-seventh, we were at four hundred and eight deaths related to overdose. We cannot and I will not continue to sit on my hands and do nothing. We must utilize every tool that is available to us to save people's lives, to create opportunities for them to access the help that they need when they are ready and when they need it. I don't usually share this publicly, but I will say again, accessing the care when they need it. I've had people in my life that I love that have been in a place ready to receive services and when they called places to access them, they weren't able to get them. We have a severe shortage and if you're able to go to a place that is stigma-free where you can have multiple contacts and have multiple options to access treatment services where they will connect you directly to those services, I don't know what we're doing. This is one of those tools that we are updating, an outdated city ordinance that is not aligned with the rest of the country, that is not aligned with the rest of the state and as the capital city of our state, we are the ones who should be taking the lead when it comes to good public health policy and this is our time to do that. We see really good work coming out of the Roads to Recovery Program with two hundred and three people enrolled and two hundred and thirty-six actively engaging in the program. Very proud of that work, but we also know it's severely underfunded. And if we're gonna just rely on one program and if we're gonna rely on only, you know, we can get people into inpatient or outpatient, yes, we need all of those things. We need the full menu and we need them to be accessible without barriers. Syringe access programs are also a road to recovery. A thirty-year evidence and research-based program where people are five times more likely to access treatment when they have interacted with the syringe access program. Five times more likely to access treatment. It concerns me to see so many misinterpretations of my colleagues' comments in committee. We've seen some of it in the press. Look, we are both moms too. I love my children. And I know that we are both teaching our children to show compassion and not to throw people away. What my colleague was saying was that we cannot look away when they see, when we see our fellow humans suffering. We cannot teach our children to look away. It is about showing some humanity and compassion and that we know people who are suffering from this disease live and exist all around us and we cannot pretend that they do not exist or that the issues that they are dealing with do not exist and that their lives are not worthy. I suppose it is easy to pretend if you have never experienced substance use issues or have someone in, or haven't had someone in your life that you know, that you love, is suffering. But I guarantee the majority of people in this room, in this body, have a connection in some way or another that is what we bring to the table as elected leaders, our expertise and our experience, both in our work and in our lived experience. So I ask, how many of you have you, have yourselves, have you yourselves or have people in your life or loved ones who have struggled with substance use? How many times have you wondered if that next phone call you get is to tell you that they are no longer with us? How many times have you been the one to find someone in your life that you love, unconscious, overdosing and have been able to be there to save their life? Sorry, it's unfortunate that my mother has had to do, has had to find someone in that way. And I ask, what is a life worth? Is it worth to not listen to public health experts? In the same way we listened to them and then we encouraged our constituents and residents to listen to them when it came to decreasing the spread of COVID nineteen? Is it any different? Or is it worth ensuring we are utilizing every single tool that is available to us in order to get people the services and resources that they need when they are ready and when they need it? This bill we are talking about is in fact about breaking down barriers for people to access services where they can access treatment in a safe environment, free from stigma. This is not, this is not a bill to create a supervised use site, a supervised injection site, a safe use site, whatever you want to call it. And I repeat, it is not that bill.
Yeah, cuz you missed the public comment.
But it is a way to save lives, provide access to services and treatment for people who are suffering in our city. Thank you, Madam President.
That's a white people, of course.
Next up, we have Councilwoman Parity.
You know, white cheer, the matter.
Um, thank you, Council President and thank you so much, um, to my co-sponsor, Councilwoman Gonzalez Gutierrez. Also to my co-sponsor, sponsor, Councilwoman Gilmore, but Councilwoman Gonzalez Gutierrez with all of her public health experience from her education legislature, um, has really led on this and I wanna recognize that. There are so many misconceptions floating around about this bill and that's because it is a bill about addiction. Um, and we love to traffic in misinformation when it comes to addiction. So I am gonna take a minute, um, I think it's important to know what the existing regulatory structure for needle exchanges looks like. Needle exchanges in the city are regulated by the Department of Public Health and Environment. There is a, you know, thick set of regulations. They prevent needle waste, they provide for, um, sorry, the regulate, sorry. I'm flustered, I'm also, um, emotional. And so I'm just gonna take a step back and start that again. In order to even become a licensed needle exchange program in our city, first a program has to demonstrate the need and the location that they wanna go to. They have to say who they're gonna serve, they have to show their bona fides as an organization. They have to say where they'll get their funding, they have to have a community outreach plan. They have to have a referral system to treatment, housing, everything. They have to have a referral system to treatment, housing, everything that folks might need who come in their door. Once they become licensed, if they meet all of those hurdles, they must maintain an advisory board. They have to have a specific police liaison. They have to make a report anytime police are called or anytime there's violence at their facility, immediately to the Public Health Department. They get a surprise inspection twice a year on all of those things. These inspection reports talk about, you know, are all your staff vaccinated? Do you have records of training of every single person on your staff? You know, they're like a 15-point inspection form, quarterly reports in addition to two surprise inspections a year. If there is a complaint that is validated, that is sufficiently serious, or they fail an inspection, their license can be revoked. So the idea that by adding a new requirement that also allows neighbors, which I'll talk to in a minute, to create additional licensure requirements is that when you interact with them, they run such clean operations. And I do mean both programs when I say that. In terms of complaints, we had, we did our homework on this bill for months and months. DD-PHE looked back at the records they have available, and they only found two complaints among the three programs, neither of which led to any finding of a violation or revocation proceeding. By the way, we can ask DD-PHE to add regulations anytime. So if we have a concern with the regulatory scheme, if we want to add a regulation that says you have to inspect your parking lot or something like that, approach DD-PHE. Don't block this ordinance. Punishing these nonprofits that are providing life-saving services to our city or acting as though adding the flexibility they need to operate is somehow a reward is not the appropriate mechanism. Accountability exists elsewhere. And by the way, we don't see that borne out in complaints to the Health Department. They are zoned as medical offices, so they can't exist everywhere in the city on top of this bizarre school-based distance requirement. They have to be just like a methadone clinic, a rehab center, any other kind of medical or addiction treatment that you could seek in this city. They have to be in a medically zoned area. None of those uses, methadone clinics, rehab centers, have this additional 1,000-foot school-based restriction, which by the way is like two and a half to four blocks. It's a vast area. Even though unlike needle exchanges, those kinds of treatments facilities do have controlled substances on site. Of course, they aren't selling those substances, which is what liquor and marijuana stores do. We all know that teenagers will go up to someone in the parking lot of a liquor store and say, here's 20 bucks, go in and buy me a six-pack. That's why we have a distance restriction between schools and liquor stores. That doesn't happen at a needle exchange. The only thing you can get at a needle exchange is Narcan testing strips and clean syringes and referrals to life-saving treatment. By the way, I want to respond to Councilmember Flynn. I understand your articulated concern, and I appreciate you for being so specific about it. But the ordinance that this council passed by a 12-to-1 vote before many of us were on the body that established the possibility of safe use sites if they become legal at the state level has a 1,000-foot distance restriction. It is Denver-Drive Municipal Code 24-159. And so in the imagined scenario where one of our existing needle exchange providers does open up within 1,000 feet of a school or childcare center, they're not going to be able to establish a safe use site unless we change that ordinance, which no one is proposing to do. So I, I think that concern is completely misplaced. They're two completely different ordinances that regulate needle exchanges versus safe use sites. We are only touching the one that regulates needle exchanges tonight. In terms of safety and crime, people certainly shook the rafters looking for this, and there is no evidence. And in fact, there are affirmative studies from all over the country that show that needle exchanges do not increase crime in the vicinity. And that is because they, they are communities. They are places where people are going to get help. And they understand that they have to abide by certain rules in order to continue to access that site and get that help. Our providers run a tight ship. They do spend a lot of time, you know, circulating their program areas. And in fact, when the Department of Safety sent us data, we saw that one of our two needle exchange locations, which was attached to a Walgreens, had far less crime by like 40 to 60% than another comparable Walgreens, because Walgreens, unlike needle exchanges, are crime magnets. What else, what do these needle exchanges do? So they collect needles. They collect 650,000 used syringes per year. We get complaints about syringes in our parks. It is because we do not have enough places for folks to go in and exchange their used syringes. That is one of the primary reasons why you see needle litter in Denver that you don't see in other cities that have more needle exchange sites per capita. So if that's a concern that you have, this ordinance is for you. They also provide people with clean syringes. What we learned during the HIV and AIDS epidemic in the 1980s is that if we do not do that, people will die of infectious diseases. Infectious diseases we know about, infectious diseases we may not know about. And that's why one of the constituents in District 9, where I also live, sent an email expressing concern that if we continue to restrict these programs and our population continues to grow without this service being able to grow apace, that we could see a resurgence of the HIV. And that's Vivan Health, which we honored with a proclamation last month that all of us voted for. So most large cities have multiple locations because we don't want dirty needles on the ground or in our trash or being picked up by our park rangers, and we don't want people contracting HIV and dying of AIDS. They are also a treatment gateway, as my colleague, Councilmember Gonzalez Gutierrez emphasized. And why is that? Because when you go in somewhere routinely, you know that you're not going to be judged in that place. And you know that when you're ready, you could make the ask, and they will have those referral resources at the ready to people that they trust. They can give you a warm handoff, introduce you with someone that they know. That is the number one way for people to access treatment through a place where they feel safe and where they visit perhaps every month. Finally, let us not forget, they also give out things like Narcan and drug testing strips. The street drugs that are being sold today are often an amalgam of God knows what. They may have ingredients that are not what was sold to you. They may have ingredients that we've barely even heard about yet. They're inventing new ones all the time. So those things are concretely life-saving, and they give people a chance to make it through to the day that they enter recovery, as some people in this room I know have, and I am glad you're here. I will never stop emphasizing that even if someone is in the darkest depths of addiction, and people are not pleasant when they are in that place, we all know that. But if they are in that place and they are not yet reaching out that hand for help, they're rejecting treatment. I want that person to live. I want that person to have a chance to walk from the back someday as the family member they knew and loved. I do not believe that a social death sentence for addiction is appropriate or is what any of us really want. We have funded our needle exchanges in the city for more than a decade. I don't remember the number of years, to be honest. And right now, we don't have enough of these programs in enough parts of the city. Every month, about 5,000 different people in a single month access our two needle exchange programs, 5,000 Denverites. When we had our last municipal elections across all the different candidacies, most of us got about 30,000 votes in our first round before runoffs. 5,000 Denverites, month in and month out, accessing our two needle exchange programs. So what did our Public Health Department do recently? They took a survey of 1,000 users of those programs, scientifically valid. They spent an incredibly long time on it, and they put out a 57-page report. And that report said in no uncertain terms, location and distance are the biggest barriers to folks consistently using those locations. So if you can't get there all the time, maybe you throw your needles in the trash, maybe you reuse a dirty needle, maybe you don't get your Narcan, maybe you overdose, maybe we've lost you. And I'm not being hyperbolic. Now, I may have been burying the lead on this, but as only Denver has this kind of regulation. Among the 250 biggest cities in America and among all towns in Colorado, we have dozens of these programs statewide, nobody has a restriction separating these programs from schools because they are not programs where controlled substances are allowed to be. It knocks out fully half of the land where they could otherwise exist in medical zoning in our city. We know how Denver's real estate market works. We are essentially compressing them out of existence because they have to be able to afford to continue to operate. And again, no one's making big money here. They're on shoestring budgets, including partially funding from our city. That distance restriction appears to be modeled on alcohol and marijuana and other uses like that. And again, that's because liquor stores have alcohol, marijuana stores have marijuana. Those things are dangerous to teenagers. As Councilmember Heinz mentioned, despite this ordinance being on the books since the 1990s, both of our fixed sites have operated for years under grandfathering or waivers within 1,000 feet of, in one case, two high schools, both of which have written a letter of support. We got the second letter today. Active support, not just saying we're not opposed to this ordinance, saying we support Harm Reduction Action Center, their work. We would like to see this ordinance pass. And in the other case, within 1,000 feet of one childcare facility, there's never been a problem, there's never been a complaint, there's never been a licensure revocation proceeding, nothing. So this is essentially a dead letter. And we are about to leave it on the books, even though it creates vast headaches for these providers that we so desperately need. So what does the bill do? The SAP report from our Public Health Department that I mentioned earlier makes a single request of us as city council. It says, "It is recommended that DD-PHE propose to the Denver Mayor's Office and the City Council an amendment of City Ordinance 24-157 to remove the limit on the number of needle exchange and treatment referral programs that can operate in Denver. The efficacy of syringe access programs in supporting the public health needs of drug users partially depends on accessibility and consistent use of the programs." Additionally, it is recommended that DD-PHE propose removing the requirement for fixed sites to operate 1,000 feet from elementary and secondary schools. Removing the limit on the number of SAPs and the buffer zone would eliminate barriers for participants needing access to resources and barriers for providers actively responding to the community's needs by providing life-saving support and services. So the ordinance does exactly those two things. In addition to those two things, however, we add a requirement that I believe adds better protection to the kinds of concerns that people have about these sites. And that is to say that we have directed the Department of Public Health and Environment to issue regulations that would create a good neighbor agreement process that is mandatory for any licensee. So they have to participate, assuming those folks in the community that are willing to participate on the other side. And if an agreement is reached, to make those terms conditions of a license. So other types of good neighbor agreements are typically a contract between community groups and, you know, whoever else is coming to the table. Those are difficult to enforce, as Councilmember Sawyer said. And so we solved that at the suggestion of Council President Sandoval, and we provided that anything that comes out of that process, so the specific needs of a neighborhood, whether that's perhaps we'd like you to have a security guard on site, perhaps we'd like you to do needle cleanups in our neighborhood. Perhaps we would like a liaison, and we would like to have monthly meetings and hear you report back to us. Whatever those things might be, those then become licensure conditions that can lead to a site's license being revoked enforced by the Public Health Department. So it is simply not true in this context that a good neighbor agreement will be unenforceable. So we have been in the weeds of this particular ordinance, this particular policy change, because I thought it was important to do that, given the just wild takes that we've heard, such as that we're going to allow these programs to exist anywhere in the city, or that somehow have we seen those rising overdose numbers that are terrifying that I think about as an elected official every night? Why have we seen the evolution of the opioid crisis from heroin and OxyContin to Fentanyl to new opioids like Xylazade to these mixtures? Most of the Fentanyl in the US is manufactured and sold by the Sinola cartel. These multinational criminal networks that produce and sell illegal drugs have every incentive, billion-dollar incentives, to pack the most potency into the smallest package because that makes drug smuggling easier. So that's exactly what they do. And inexorably, we end up with a little blue pill that is 50 to 100 times as potent as morphine and can be addictive and fatal in a single dose. Why is there a market for Fentanyl? Well, for two reasons, because we don't prevent addiction and we don't cure addiction. Starting with the second thing first, we have a cultural narrative that tells us that substance misuse and addiction arise from personal moral failings, that addicts are dangerous, they're not like us, perhaps they're barely human. We blame the entire problem, not on policymakers, us up here, not on our healthcare systems, not even on the cartels, but on those who become uncontrollably dependent on these wildly addictive new synthetic drugs. And then we wash our hands of them, and we leave them to struggle in shame and in silence. People experiencing addiction in America uniformly experience vast shame, which becomes one of the biggest barriers to ever being able to raise your hand and say, I need help to recover and to survive. And every time we try to fund what we know works, we get questions like, why are you spending my taxpayer dollars on addicts? So we don't cure addiction. Turning back to the first of those two reasons, what are the roots of addiction? Why do we fail so badly on the prevention side? According to the National Institutes of Health, quote, and I think we know this as human beings, "Drug use is largely demand-driven by people seeking to self-medicate to deal with trauma, physical pain, emotional pain, isolation, mental illness, and a range of other personal challenges." Drug use is about escape from conditions that we are also responsible for as policymakers. We all know the awful statistics about failing mental health and lack of mental health support in the United States. So are we surprised that 17% of Americans ages 12 and up have substance use disorders? 28% of young adults ages 18 to 25, that's more than 1 in 4. In Denver, we have about 10,000 IV drug users. That is more than 1% of our city, of my constituents as an outreach member. And so there you have it. That is how you create a $13 billion a year business for the cartels. People become addicted, we turn our backs on them, and the market is there to make absolutely sure that they are addicted to the most potent possible substance, and that when the craving hits, they can meet it over and over again until the hit they don't wake up from. And that step back is specifically for my colleagues, the mayor, and those listening who are linking the existence of needle exchanges to increasing addiction. I promise you, addict two doors that people can walk through and get help are not what created this crisis. And people are not going to stop dealing drugs if we price out of the city some of the only gateways to treatment. The drug users that live here in our city that are members of our families, whether we like it or not, will not disappear just because we turn our backs on them. That is why I said in committee that I think we all need to see drug users, not drug use. People can't be made invisible in our city, and I'm sorry, but none of us, not a single one of us, is immune to having someone we love fall into this trap. We do need more of these sites. We do need pipelines to treatment, just as we need treatment. And we do need to be aware that people who are addicted to drugs are everywhere among us and that none of us is immune. So this is both a small bill in the sense that I'm confident nobody will be hurt when it passes, and a huge bill in the sense that people die, nearly every single day in Denver, more than one person a day dies in this city of an overdose. We know exactly what to do about it, which is to stop choking off the existence of one of the best paths to recovery that we know about. I am so proud to be a sponsor of this bill. I want to thank the syringe access programs for the levers of love that you do every day and for sitting in these rooms and hearing the kind of vitriol, the dispute about people that you love and work with every single day. I want to thank the many public health and addiction and infectious disease doctors and professionals we spoke with, everyone who testified, and everyone who emailed sharing something painful and private and personal within your family or within your own life about your experiences with addiction. That was brave. I heard you. For those of my colleagues who plan to vote no tonight, while also stating your support for harm reduction work, all I can say is that our program within DD-PHE and the outside partners are who identified the need for this bill. They have told us it is too complex to navigate with these distance restrictions, that it is overwhelming. And on the other side of that, no one has come to us with any genuine harm to children because something exists within a few blocks of their school where people go in a door and get clean needles. So your words do ring somewhat hollow, and I have to say tonight that you are voting to prevent any new programs, any secondary sites, any ability to relocate, and especially to easily relocate near where your participants expect to find you. You are voting to overtax these incredibly overwhelmed nonprofits that we lean on to do our work in this area with onerous and expensive real estate certain searches. It's a drain on them in every way. So I'm sorry, but it's not a yes and, it's just a no. And more than that, by giving air to the idea that our highly regulated health partners are a threat to children, we are dealing in the deadly playbook of misinformation and stigma. All of the evidence of every kind points us in one direction. We as leaders should be voting yes unanimously and easily tonight, and then putting our shoulder back to the wheel of combating stigma and misinformation, which I believe is my job. Thank you for the opportunity to sponsor and vote yes on this bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman Parity. As we close out and think about this bill in front of us, for those who are watching, I was not able to attend last week. I was out sick. So some of my closing thoughts are, where are we doing in Denver to meet people where they are? Syringe access embody the principle of harm reduction. They provide nonjudgmental life-saving resources to individuals without stigmatation. As public officials and community leaders, I truly believe we have a responsibility to implement policies that prioritize health, dignity, and well-being of all residents. As we all know, we have an ongoing opioid epidemic, devastating families and communities. And now is the time to expand, not limit, access to programs that save lives. Removing restrictions on syringe access programs sends a strong message that we are committed to addressing this crisis with evidence-based solution. And with that, I see no more of my colleagues in the queue. Mr. Secretary, roll call on Council Bill 1791.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Sawyer?
No.
Alvedras?
Nay.
Flynn?
Nay.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramara Campbell?
Nay.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Nay.
Madam President?
Hi, Mr. Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
Five nays, eight ayes.
Five nays, eight ayes. Council Bill 1791 has been adopted. This concludes the items to be called out. All bills for introduction are ordered published. Council members, remember that this is a consent or block vote, and you will need to vote aye. Councilmember Gonzalez Gutierrez, will you please put the resolutions for adoption and the bills on final consideration for final consideration, for final passage on the floor? One moment, Madam President, just getting to the top here. All right, I move that resolutions be adopted and bills on final consideration be placed upon final consideration and do pass in a block for the following items. Series of 24, 1853, 1845, 1801, 1846, 1856, 1861, 1287, 1290, 1704, 1850, 1852, 1854, 1857, 1858, 1752, 1849. seventeen fifty-two, eighteen forty-nine, eighteen forty, eighteen forty-one, eighteen seventeen, eighteen nineteen, eighteen thirty-four, eighteen twenty, eighteen thirty-nine. This has been moved and seconded. Mr. Secretary, roll call.
Gomor.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Alvidres.
Aye.
Flynn.
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hines.
Aye.
Cashman. Lewis.
Aye.
Parity. Romero Campbell.
Aye.
Torres.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Madam President.
Aye. Mr. Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. Twelve ayes, the resolutions have been adopted and the bills have been placed upon final consideration and do pass. There is one proclamation being read this evening. Councilmember Lewis, will you please read Proclamation twenty-five zero zero three eight?
Yes, Proclamation twenty-five zero zero three eight, recognizing January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five as Dr. E. Laquilla Phillips' Day. Whereas Dr. E. Laquilla Phillips dedicated her lives to uplifting and empowering communities through Christian values, exemplary service, leadership, and advocacy on local, national, and international platforms. Whereas Dr. Phillips profoundly impacted the city and county of Denver through her unwavering commitment to addressing critical social challenges, championing equity, and fostering opportunities for marginalized populations. And whereas Dr. Phillips demonstrated exceptional leadership in developing innovative programs and initiatives that transformed the lives of countless individuals with within our city and beyond. And whereas Dr. Phillips' work extended far beyond the borders of Denver, earning national recognition for her contributions to advancing education, healthcare access, and social justice, and inspiring countless others, especially women, to follow her example of compassion and service. And whereas Dr. Phillips amplified her influence on the global stage, forging international partnerships and advocating for sustainable solutions to address systemic inequities, serving as a bridge of hope and understanding across cultures. And whereas Dr. Phillips passed away on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, leaving behind a legacy of transformative leadership, selfless service, and unshakable hope that will continue to inspire future generations. And whereas the Denver City Council recognizes the profound loss felt by her husband, the legendary Bishop Dr. A. C. Phillips, her family, friends, colleagues, and the countless lives she touched through her work. Now therefore, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Denver City Council, section one, that the Denver City Council formally recognizes January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five as Dr. E. Laquilla Phillips' Day and the city and county of Denver to honor her memory and celebrate her invaluable contributions to our, to our city, our nation, and our world. Section two, that the clerk and recorder of the city and county of Denver shall affix the seal of the city and county of Denver to this proclamation and that a copy be transmitted to Bishop Dr. A. C. Phillips, husband of Dr. E. Laquilla Phillips.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Your motion to adopt?
I move that council, sorry, I move that proclamation number twenty-five zero zero three eight be adopted.
It has been moved and seconded. Comments by members of council? Councilmember Lewis?
Yes. So I would ask Dr. A. C. Phillips if you might stand. Thank you. So Dr. E. Laquilla Phillips, a native of Denver, served this city, state, region, nation, and world as your First Lady for sixty-six years. Her entire life was dedicated to standing for women, for children, and the black community through the church. She has left generations upheld excellence, and she did it with the best fashion, grace, patience, love, and integrity. If you are in community, you have been impacted by Dr. E. Laquilla Phillips or by someone she has mentored. She is the mother of A. C. Junior, Greg, Dell, Vicky, and Aaron, and the mama of our great city. We officially celebrate January twenty-eighth, Dr. E. Laquilla Phillips' Day. Thank you.
Mr. Secretary, roll call. Mr. Secretary, roll call.
Gomor. Sawyer.
Aye.
Alvidres.
Aye.
Flynn.
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez. Hines. Cashman.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Parity.
Aye.
Romero Campbell.
Aye.
Torres.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Madam President.
Aye. Mr. Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
Ten ayes.
Ten ayes? Proclamation zero zero three eight has been adopted. Councilmember Lewis, you now have five minutes for the proclamation acceptance. Who would you like to call up?
Yes, I would like to call up Dr. A. C. Phillips, as well as Dr. A. C.
Let me just say, thank you so much. It's a joy to be able to come and hear you make this celebratory announcement about my beloved wife. Servant side by side with me for sixty-seven years, and I just thank God for it. So I'm telling all of the council people here today, you made this young man's heart glad today. She was here with me in this same city council so many times, who was standing for the best for our city. And I just want to commend all of our council people for the great work you do, especially during this season when you really need to have a witness to see what you could do to maintain the tranquility, the love that she represents. She, she had a beautiful spirit and always knew how to mend things that were broken and build bridges to make communication for people to come together. I just thank God for the way you all have come together tonight. Normally I'd have a lot of words that I could say, but you kind of blotted me out. I'm so surprised but so grateful. I don't know how to say thank you other than let you know that my heart is just rejoicing. I'm glad that God blessed me with such a wonderful woman. I always said he didn't have a one quill. I knew God loved me because he gave her to me. Now that she's transitioned, and she's still alive in my heart. Every day I can feel that same tone that she keeps saying, do all you can, as well as you can, to as many people as you can to make sure love resides and love prevails. She always would say, make sure you don't ask God to walk with you, but you ask God that you walk with him. Because you don't know where you're going, but God does know where he's going. And we're walking with him. We want to have a little talk and tell him all about the challenges we have. And when we're walking and talking with him, that light in us draws someone else to remember Christ is. God bless you so much. Thank you for what you've done. I never will forget this moment, how you celebrated my beloved wife, Dr. E. Laquilla Phillips. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, the City Council. Thank you so much for making this happen. We kept this from my grandfather, so this was a complete surprise. I have to acknowledge my aunt, my uncle, my father is the baby. I'm the favorite grandchild, but we do have two other grandchildren here. But I do just want to extend gratitude. I have also sent in this room fighting for community, for advocacy, and I learned it from my grandfather. And it was telling me where to go. You got to go to City Council. This is how you get things in front of people. This is how you do this work, so I appreciate it. Also want to invite you all, we will be celebrating her birthday on a Zoom, had a tube, so bring your pretty church hat. I'll make sure that you have the information, and we're going to share with the community what this great city has done to honor her. But I just want to say thank you and shout out. Thank you. I just, I love this city, and I'm so blessed to be able to say that I've been able to serve through the leadership and the example of my grandparents. Thank you.
We have three publicitarians tonight. As a reminder, City Council members need to turn on their videos during the vote. For those participating in person when called upon, please come to the podium on the presentation monitor on the wall. You will see your time counting down. For those participating virtually when called upon, please wait until our meeting host promotes you to speaker. When you are promoted, please accept the promotion, turn on your camera if you have one, and your microphone. All speakers should begin their remarks by telling the council their names and cities of residence, and if they feel comfortable doing so, their home addresses. If you have signed up to answer questions only, state your name and note that you are available for questions of council. Speakers will have three minutes. There is no yielding of time. If translation is needed, you will be given an additional three minutes for your comments to be interpreted. Speakers must stay on the topic of the hearing unless direct their comments to council as a whole. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech and refrain from individual or personal attacks. Councilmember Gonzalez, will you please put Council Bill twenty-four fourteen ninety, an ordinance for changing the zoning classification for one thousand South Logan Street in Wash Park on the floor for final passage? I move that Council Bill twenty-four fourteen ninety be placed upon final consideration and do pass. It has been moved and seconded. The required publicitarian for Council Bill twenty-four fourteen ninety is open. Really please have the staff report.
Alright, good evening, council members. I'll get my presentation up here. My name is Tony Lachuga. I'm a senior planner with Community Planning and Development. And I'm here to present the private applicant proposed change to the zoning classification at one thousand South Logan Street. So let's start with the nature of their request. So the property is located on the map outlined in red here. It's just under thirty thousand square feet. It currently contains a one-story multi-unit residential property. And they're looking to change the zoning classification from U R H three A, which stands for urban row house, up to three stories, to U M X three, which stands for urban mixed-use, also up to three stories. Some different building forms. Provides different building forms, and that's primarily because the U R H three A is a residential zone district, whereas the M X district allows for both residential and commercial. So this property is located in Council District Seven, represented by Councilmember Alvidres. It's located right here in the Washington Park West. People will notice it is just north of I twenty-five, but it's also along the light rail tracks right there. It's less than a mile from both the Broadway Station and just over half a mile away from the Louisiana Pearl Station to the south. This is the property in its context, so you can see the zoning is currently U R H three A, which is largely an outlier in this area. Across the street, we have a similar U M X three, which is what the applicant is proposing. To the north, we have U M X two X. And I'll note that its current design, like I said, is a residential district, so it allows for the property owner to build urban houses, duplexes, potentially a tandem house, or the three A allows for apartment buildings. I'll note that apartments have a lot size limitation of sixteen thousand square feet. So for this property, as you remember, I noted it's about thirty thousand square feet. If they were to do that, they would actually have to divide the property in two to build two apartment buildings. I also wanted to note that the apartment building form in U R H three A has no protected district standards. It's proximate to those districts that I brought up. And the U M X three that they're proposing has a general purpose of providing a safe, active, and pedestrian scaled area where new development contributes positively to established neighborhoods by creating transitions between commercial and residential and creating pedestrian active street frontages. Part of this is that the zone district pushes closer to the primary street. It has protected district standards on all sides, so if it has proximity to lower density residential, it actually limits heights and distances to those. Its intent is to be applied at areas or intersections served primarily by local or collector streets, such as the ones here. And it does have these following building forms: townhouse, the two drive-through building forms, and the general and shopfront. But again, those protected district standards only apply to the general and shopfront, which allow the higher heights. In terms of existing land use, you can see that it's currently listed as multi-unit residential, has our many properties along Logan here, with the exception of across the street there being a mixed-use site, as well as what is called a large industrial site, but if you're familiar with that area, is a USPS site, where a lot of the trucks are stored overnight and loaded. But its proximity immediately to the east is to single unit residential properties, except for those larger density properties closer to the Broadway Station to the west. Let's talk about about process. So this application has been around for a while. Its informational notice went out back in June, the end of June in twenty twenty-four. It went to planning board in mid-October. It had its committee hearing in November. And then its public hearing date got delayed in December due to quorum issues with council, which brought us here tonight to January. Planning Board heard this back in October. They voted unanimously to recommend approval, noting that this was a more consistent zone district with the local center place that is recommended for more planned governance. I'm going to pause briefly on this slide to note that between the time that my staff report and this presentation were due to you, some things have changed. So while this states that we have not received letters of support or opposition from multiple RNOs, that is not true. As of Friday, the West Washington Park Neighborhood Association issued a letter of support for the rezoning, noting the ongoing conversations they've had with this applicant and the outcomes from a good neighbor agreement. As of this presentation, we did receive one comment of opposition. That person was a member of the West Washington Park Neighborhood Association, and it's unclear to me if they changed their mind and voted to support this. But as of the time that I sent you this presentation, they had some concerns and were requesting a change to the zone district. So let's dive into the review criteria. So for anybody who doesn't know, we are mandated to look at five review criteria to consider the appropriateness of a request such as this. The first of which is consistency with adopted plans. And for this location, we have the two citywide plans, and then we have one small area plan that is a bit dated, having been created in nineteen ninety-one. But if we look at the comprehensive plan, we do see that it meets some of the goals from that, including two related to creating strong and authentic neighborhoods. This zone district could help build a network of well-connected, vibrant, mixed-use centers and corridors, whereas the old district wouldn't allow for mixed use. We would also encourage quality infill development that would be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood and offer increased amenities. In terms of environmentally resilient, we would be promoting infill development where we already have services in place. We would be encouraging a mixed-use community where people can live, work, and play within their own neighborhood. And we can focus growth by transit stations and along high and medium capacity transit corridors. I note its proximity to I twenty-five, as well as its not-too-distant proximity to two train stations. We'll turn now to Blueprint Denver, which is the city's citywide land use plan, which provides some more refined guidance on what we should expect out of zone districts. So Blueprint has neighborhood contexts, which give us direction on the type of district we should see. And this calls for an urban district. In both their existing and their proposed zone district, they maintain that through that U designation. And this does allow for small multi-unit residential and mixed-use areas that are typically embedded in one and two-unit residential areas. And so we see this as appropriate for this location. Blueprint Denver also identifies future places. And in this case, it identifies this future place as a local center. Local centers are supposed to provide options for dining, entertainment, shopping, but it's also where there can be residential, and we encourage active street frontages. Heights are generally up to three stories. We see the U M X three as appropriate for the local center context, because it could provide opportunities for both the residential and commercial options up to three stories in height. And I also wanted to bring up this map to note that you can see in Blueprint Denver, where we intentionally put local centers, the majority of the time that follows an M X or an M S district is this property really is kind of an outlier with the U R H three A designation. And in terms of Blueprint Denver's growth strategies, where we anticipate seeing targeted growth, this is considered all other areas of the city where we anticipate seeing modest growth in either housing or employment over time. And the change to U M X three wouldn't see a drastic increase in either of those, but would allow for that gentle density increase. And then we'll turn to our final plan, which is the West Washington Park Neighborhood Plan of nineteen ninety-one. The plan envisioned a different world than the one we live in today. It also talked about housing in a different way than our current zoning code does. It called for particular caps on density through F A R, which we no longer utilize in our current zone. But I did want to note some important things from that plan. One is the plan's purpose. Even in nineteen ninety-one, the purpose was to promote patterns of land use, urban design, circulation, and services that contribute to the economic, social, and physical health, safety, and welfare of the people who live and work in the neighborhood. And we believe that the U M X three helps promote those same plan purposes even thirty, thirty-four years later. I also want to point out Housing Goal Five, which says that we should be planning for a mix of people: individuals, families, people of all ages, renters, homeowners, and different lifestyles, in order to permit a mix of housing types, encourage new housing that's compatible with existing housing stock and character design and scale. What would emerge from a U M X three would be similar in terms of the new buildings across the street, the new buildings to the north, and would still provide the protected district standards for those properties to the east that are more historical-aged homes. And it would provide for a greater mix of people, helping us to achieve this goal. We believe this would necessarily result in uniformative district regulations through application of a standard zone district. We would further public health, safety, and welfare through implementation of our more recently adopted plans, providing options for more neighborhood-scale commercial, and allowing a greater mix of housing and retail types. We believe there's a justifying circumstance through our adopted plans. The zoning on this site actually predates comprehensive plan and blueprint. And so this would actually be implementing those plans and changing conditions in the area. The light rail was built since that nineteen ninety-one plan was built. We've seen investments in upgrades to the Louisiana Pearl Station, and we've seen significant investments in the area around the Broadway Station. And we believe this would result in consistency with the neighborhood context, zone district purpose, and intent statements as written into the Denver zoning code. With that, finding that this meets all five criteria, CPD recommends that the city council approve this. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know the applicant team is here as well.
Thank you, Tony. We have five individuals signed up to speak this evening. If you are here in person after your name is called, please make your way up to the front bench. If you are in Zoom, please accept the promotion when called. Event producer, can you please pull down the slide? Thank you. First person is Peter Wall.
Good evening, Madam President and councilmembers. Peter Wall here on behalf of the applicant fifteen eighty Lincoln Street in Denver, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sarah Graditor.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Sarah Graditor. I'm a member of the West Washington Park Neighborhood Association and on the zoning committee. I'm speaking on behalf of the West Wash Park Neighborhood Association, the registered neighborhood organization representing our community. We are here to express our support for the proposed rezoning of one thousand South Logan Street from a U R H three A zoning district to a U M X three zoning district. Our RNO has engaged extensively with the developer and its representatives to prioritize the community and to ensure this project reflects the community's values. We have worked together to address concerns like building height, privacy, parking, and maintaining the character of the neighborhood. Through these efforts, we secured commitments in a mutually agreed-upon community benefit agreement to include that the property will be used exclusively for residential use. There will be no east-facing balconies other than facing into the courtyard area, thereby protecting privacy concerns of those who live directly east of the project. And Marriott has pursued and will continue to pursue parking agreements with adjacent and nearby property owners, in addition to providing for at least sixty parking spaces on its own property. There are also restrictions and requirements relating to noise levels, exterior lighting, and aesthetics, among other things. In addition, throughout this process, our RNO has made significant efforts to include our community as a whole and to incorporate the feedback received with respect to the community benefit agreement and the decision to support this rezoning. Among these efforts were community town halls held by the West Wash Park Neighborhood Association, one of which Marriott presented its plans for the rezoning. And the C B A has been discussed at length at several WIPNA board and zoning committee meetings, all of which were open to the public and publicized on the WIPNA webpage and in the newsletter distributed quarterly throughout the neighborhood. West Washington Park Neighborhood Association wants council to know that the terms of the C B A were reached as a result of taking into account the priorities of the entire community. We understand the importance of balancing growth with preservation, and we believe this project will strike that balance. It should enhance the area while respecting the community's identity.
We have been promoted to panelists.
Recording in progress.
And your continued commitment to serving our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Adam Fenton.
Good evening, I'm Adam Fenton. I am the applicant for the rezone, just here to answer questions. I live at twelve fifty South Pearl Street in Denver, Colorado.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jesse Paris virtually.
Yes, good evening, members of council that was watching at home. May I be heard?
Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Jesse LaShawn Parrish, and I'm representative for Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Community Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the Northeast Denver Residence Council, Frontline Black News, Shabaka's Black Experience, Enhanced the Revolutionary Agenda. And I reside at the C C H owned Fusion Studios in Chantel Lewis's District Eight. Okay, also, here we go, now the rezoning of this type. So I'm going to ask the usual questions that I've been asking for the past eight, going on nine years now. What is going to be the A M I level for the proposed residential? Thank you to the previous speaker that answered the majority of my questions about the parking and the community neighborhood agreement, neighborhood benefits agreement. What is going to be the A M I for this proposed residential housing? How many units are we talking about? Has there been a traffic study done? Because like you said, this is like right adjacent to I twenty-five. She said something about the lighting, the balconies. And there was something else she has stated. If the occupant or somebody on the team or CPD can answer those questions, I would greatly appreciate it. We don't need any more unintended consequences from these rezonings that current city council and previous city council have approved. So we want to make sure that all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed before this council approves rezonings of this sort. Thank you, I'll see you on the next one.
Thank you. Next up, we have Gertrude. Recording in progress.
Good evening, Madam President and members of city council. My name is Gertrude or Gertie Grant, and I live at two forty-two South Lincoln Street, which is in Council District Seven. I'm on the board in the zoning committee of the West Washington Park Neighborhood Association, whose boundaries are Broadway to Downing and Cherry Creek South to I twenty-five and include one thousand South Logan. One thousand South Logan is one and a half block directly north of I twenty-five. It is the logical place for more dense development, and this zoning is consistent with all the city plans. West Wash Park Neighborhood Association is fortunate to have been able to work with an experienced, successful developer applicant and a highly respected architectural firm on this rezoning. The applicant has agreed to pay for an attorney of our choosing to help us negotiate this community benefit agreement and to reach consensus on terms that satisfied much, but not all, of what nearby neighbors wanted. The applicant has also agreed to help get some traffic amelioration for the very hazardous intersection of North Bucktel and South Logan, which is dangerous for cars during rush hour and extremely dangerous for pedestrians trying to cross North Bucktel or Logan. Hopefully, that can be corrected before another casualty is added to the fatality tally. The reservation I have personally about rezoning from residential to commercial is not so much with this particular rezoning because there is a very wide existing right-of-way between the sidewalk and the street here. My concern is with the apparent absence of sensitivity with the planning process and zoning code to protect and promote our urban forest. Residentially zoned districts have building setbacks large enough to foster healthy urban trees. That setback is eliminated by rezoning to M S or M X. Is there any thought about the long-term environmental impact on our urban forest and the sustainability of the denser city we are pursuing? This rezoning is requested partly, in my opinion, because the front setback in the new zoning is on the zone lot line, not the setback of the R H district. In older neighborhoods like West Wash Park, many of the alleys are only twelve feet wide. The city requires new development to increase the alley setback to accommodate larger utility vehicles. Rezoning to M S or M X allows developers to regain the square footage loss along the alley with square footage along the front setback. This comes at the expense of space street trees need to survive and clean and cool our air, making the city less environmentally sustainable and less healthy for Denverites.
Thank you so much for your public comment. That concludes your time.
Thank you. I urge you to support this rezoning.
That concludes our speakers. Questions from members of council on Council Bill twenty-four fourteen ninety? Councilwoman Alvidres.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Council President. I have a question for the applicant about the reasoning for the rezoning and just the setback. If you could speak to that a little bit.
Hi, Peter Wall again here on behalf of the applicant. Now, I appreciate the question. The reason for the rezoning is, and Tony really alluded to it, within the U R H three A, it doesn't have that setback from the protected district. So what the U M X three allows us to do is move the building closer to Logan and then also provide an upper-story setback. So at twenty-seven feet, the building has to be stepped back fifteen feet to the west. So basically provides a nice reprieve from those single-family homes that are across the alley to the east.
Okay, and is there plans around trees for this?
Yeah, in the community benefits agreement at Gertie's request, we are actually doing more than the code requires in terms of trees.
Great, thank you. And just to refresh my memory, for the E H A, the affordable units that will go into this new property have to be at what percentage?
We have a couple of choices. We could do eight percent of the units at sixty percent A M I. We can do twelve percent of the units at a blended seventy percent A M I. And the plan is to do the affordable units on-site.
Great, that's wonderful. Thank you. That's all. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Madam President. Gertie, can I ask you a question, please? Just while you're coming up. Explain more your concerns about the urban forest, if you come to the mic.
Well, it's for the people. I'm a school teacher for no good reason.
It's for the folks on TV, Gertie.
My concern is, and this has been true in another rezoning we had in our neighborhood, where they went from residential zoning, and it was a high-rise, but it was residential high-rise, to mixed use. They gained the additional square footage along the front, but it meant less room for street trees to grow healthy. And that's my concern. I just get the impression we're concreting our city and we're not taking into consideration the environmental sustainability of our city as opposed to just going for more density.
So your concern is not with the developer as much as how our zoning sits right now? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
What I hear you saying is we need to reexamine what we require or allow in the way we zone, so we leave more room for trees.
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you. You may return to your seat now.
I'm sorry, what?
You may return to your seat.
Oh, thank you, kind sir. I do appreciate it.
I've only known Gertie for about fifty years, so. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. See no other questions from members of council? The public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill fourteen ninety? Councilman Alvidres?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to the applicant and to the RNO leaders that came today. I really appreciate your time and working together to come to an agreement. I hear your concerns, and we're looking into them, Gertie, on as far as setbacks. And when we rezone, what do the setbacks mean? But we are really excited for this work. And I'm, for one, really excited for more housing and potentially affordable housing in a very expensive neighborhood. So that's something that I'm really excited about. So thank you. Thank you, Council President. Oh, and I am supportive of this, and I would ask my colleagues to also support this. Thank you.
See no other comments from council members? Mr. Secretary, roll call on Council Bill twenty-four fourteen ninety?
Sawyer? Alvidres?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lewis? Parity?
Aye.
Romero Campbell?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
I was tempted to go Bueller. Bueller?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye.
Mr. Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. Council Bill twenty-four fourteen ninety has passed. Councilmember Gonzalez Gutierrez, will you please put Council Bill twenty-four fourteen ninety-one, an ordinance changing the zoning classification for sixteen ninety-one Chestnut Place and Union Station, on the floor for final passage? I move that Council Bill twenty-four fourteen ninety-one be placed upon final consideration and do pass. It has been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill twenty-four fourteen ninety-one is open. May we please have the staff report?
Hi again. Tony Lachuga with Community Planning and Development, and I'm here to also present the private applicant proposed change to the zoning classification at sixteen ninety-one Chestnut Place. So let's start with the applicant's request. So you can see the property on the map outlined in red here. You'll note that it's just sort of northwest of Union Station, proximate to the South Platte River and the Consolidated Main Line. And they're requesting to go from P U D five thirty-one, which is a former Chapter Fifty-nine P U D, which stands for Planned Unit Development. Five thirty-one just refers to the number of that P U D. And they're proposing to go to C M X twenty, which stands for Urban Center, mixed use, up to twenty stories. The property itself is just over forty thousand square feet. It contains an eleven-story commercial building with a nineteen-story tower on the portion. And they're requesting this rezoning to get out of former Chapter Fifty-nine, and their P U D specifically, to get into the Denver zoning code, which would provide a broader range of ground-floor commercial uses. This property is in Council District Ten, represented by Councilmember Heinz. And it's located right here in the Union Station neighborhood. This is the existing zoning, P U D five thirty-one. You'll notice on the map, P U D five thirty-one stretches a large portion of the neighborhood, basically from Spear all the way up to Twentieth Street, between Ruwata and Little Raven. And P U D five thirty-one was approved in two thousand and two. And PUD 531 was approved in 2002 as a way of, uh, creating a framework for the development of this blank slate, um, at the time that the city was moving forward with the redevelopment of Union Station. Union Station itself has that TMU 30 zoning. It was previously a part of this PUD, uh, but was removed, um, some years after its approval. Um, the orange line that you see through the middle, that's on CRX 8, is the consolidated mainline where we see a lot of our, uh, heavy freight come through. Um, you'll notice to the southeast, the downtown Lodo District, um, and then across the river you get into some CMX 5 districts. I want to talk a bit more about the existing zoning, PUD 531. And I bring this up now because before we get into consistency with adopted plans, I think it's worth noting that the PUD itself acknowledges that it differs from the 1991 Central Platte Valley Comprehensive Plan Amendment in several ways as a result of, quote, "changes in public goals" since the plan amendment was prepared. So between 1991, when we had a plan for the site in 2002 and we adopted a PUD, significant changes happened. And so when we get to that plan, I want you to know that while the neighborhood doesn't reflect the plan, that was intentional. And that gets to the proposed zoning, which is CMX 20. And CMX 20, uh, is meant to provide safe, active areas. It's intended to enhance the convenience, ease and enjoyment of our transit density, walking, shopping, public gathering, um, and is meant to be a very mixed, diverse, uh, neighborhood type with shallow front backs, high build-to requirements. Uh, and it generally, uh, applies to intersections, uh, that are primarily served by major arterials. And there are two in this area, um, one to the southeast or southwest and one to the northeast. And it allows three different building forms, townhouse, general and shopfront. In terms of land uses, you can see this entire area, which was once, uh, a vacant train yard, has been built out at this point. There isn't a vacant parcel in the area. Um, this one has been built out as an office, uh, tower. Um, but in the area, you can see a number of mixed-use sites across the train tracks, fronting on the river, you see many multi-unit properties, um, and then you can see, uh, in purple, the, uh, public, uh, Union Station terminal. In terms of the built environment, these are just some images of the property. Um, so the image on the top left is taken from the intersection of, uh, what would that be? Uh, 17th, sorry, uh, 17th Street, looking at the shorter 11-story portion. Picture on the bottom right is taken from 16th Street. You can see the Millennium Bridge off to the left there, um, and that shows the 19-story portion of the building. In terms of process, um, so informational notice about this one went out around mid-July. We had our planning board hearing in mid-October. It went to the South Platte River Committee, given its proximity to the river, uh, in November, and then it brought us here to a public hearing.
Other side of the Millennium Bridge?
In terms of public comments, uh, we did receive one letter of support from the Ladona or Lower Downtown Neighborhood Association, RNO. Uh, we wanted to see, uh, broader range of commercial options for ground floor retail in this area. And one comment from neighbors, the Riverfront Park HOA, which represents the, uh, multi-unit development across the train tracks, they did offer their support for their rezoning. They only noted one thing, which is if the property does change its use to residential, they wanted the parking podium to be wrapped so that, uh, headlights from cars wouldn't shine out of there at night. Uh, as I said, this went to planning board in mid-October. Planning board noted the ongoing need to remove these outdated PUDs and bring the entire city into the Denver zoning code, and so voted unanimously to approve this. And now we'll dive into the review criteria. So again, we have five criteria we're mandated to review, the first of which is consistency with adopted plans. And for this area, we actually have four plans, the two citywide plans, and then we have the downtown area plan of 2007 and the Central Platte Valley Comprehensive Plan. And I'll note now, it's our standard practice when we create a plan that covers a similar geography, we write that that plan supersedes it. In 2007, they did not do that, and so the 1991 plan is still considered an applicable plan for this property. We believe it meets multiple of the goals from Comprehensive Plan. In terms of creating strong and authentic neighborhoods, we believe that this will help ensure that the neighborhood offers a mix of housing types and services for a diverse population. And we believe that it'll help grow and support neighborhood-serving businesses, both of which would happen better outside of the PUD and in the CMX 20 district. In terms of Blueprint Denver, which gives us more land use guidance, we again have neighborhood context recommendations. And for this geography, it actually recommends a downtown district. And downtown districts are described as our densest and most active. They have our highest intensity residential. They're our largest employment center. And I'm gonna pause there to caveat, the blueprint also says that our mapping of neighborhood context happened at a citywide scale, and so we can interpret them with limited flexibility. And in this case, we feel like we're required to. And that's because our downtown districts, as written into the code, are geographically specific. So we have a downtown Lodo District, a downtown Golden Triangle, a downtown Arapahoe Square. We do not, as of this date, have a downtown Union Station district, and so we don't have a downtown district we could apply to this site.
Interesting.
But when we consider our neighborhood contexts, we believe that Urban Center is very consistent with downtown. The Urban Center context is described as having a lot of multi-unit residential, mixed-use commercial and commercial centers. A regular pattern of block shapes surrounded by an orthogonal street grid, block sizes and shapes that are consistent with detached sidewalks, tree lawns, um, street and surface parking, and landscaping in front setbacks. It also has, uh, consistent orientation, shallow front setbacks, and typically parking at the rear. It also has moderate to high building heights that promotes a dense urban character, and we believe that that is largely consistent with, with what we expect out of our downtown neighborhood context. And therefore, we find the application of a CMX district to be consistent with this neighborhood context recommendation. In terms of future places, uh, Blueprint Denver recommends a regional center. Regional centers are described as having the widest customer draw, where we anticipate a 24/7 live-work-play type of environment with large-scale mixed-use, high degrees of urbanism, and a strong pedestrian realm. And we believe that the CMX district will result in those same types of, uh, outcomes. In terms of growth strategies, this area is considered a regional center, where we actually anticipate seeing the highest density of types of growth, 30% of potential new housing and 50% of new employment by, uh, 2040. And we believe that the transition to CMX 20 and its allowance for a broader range of commercial uses will help achieve that goal. And a few of the narrative strategies from Blueprint Denver. One is that it does say that we should rezone properties out of former Chapter 59 and into the Denver zoning code, and we should incentivize owners to do that, and we should limit the use of customized tools such as PUDs to unique and extraordinary circumstances. And while that might have been true in 2002, we no longer think that this PUD is necessary for this site, given that it has been built out. We can move to the 2007 downtown area plan now. Um, so this plan, uh, at the time largely still saw this area as a blank slate, but it did call this subject property an opportunity site where it was important, uh, to create priority pedestrian connections along 16th and 17th, which we have achieved as a city.
Yeah.
And that same plan also encouraged us to consider that we should have neighborhood-serving retail in every district, which this would help us achieve. It would require ground floor active uses throughout downtown, which this achieves. It would, uh, have designs, uh, guidelines, which would apply to this site. It would create, uh, regulatory incentives to encourage a more diverse array of housing options. That would happen here because if they were to transition the building to residential, they would have to comply with our mandatory housing ordinances. And we should use distinctive ground floor retail, active uses and a street environment to reinforce the district's identity, which we believe is achieved through CMX 20. And finally, the 1991 Central Platte Valley Comprehensive Plan. So as you can see from this image, as you digest it very quickly, uh, it envisioned something completely different than what we built out behind Union Station. Uh, it envisioned, uh, a large amount of open space on this site as well as a small general mixed-use potential office, retail, housing, um, on this site. However, it did, in its narrative language, say we should encourage a mix of commercial development, which will create new jobs, generate direct and indirect tax revenue, and provide new amenities. And we believe that the CMX 20, while it doesn't reflect the map, reflects the, the goals around that Comprehensive Plan. Um, we believe this will result in the uniformity of district regulations. Uh, it will further our public health, safety and welfare through implementation of our adopted plans, uh, emphasizing that this PUD was created before Comp Plan and Blueprint Denver were created, uh, and it would help support a diverse mix of ground floor uses. There is a justifying circumstance in that it is a former Chapter 59 property, uh, and we wanted to come into the Denver zoning code. And we believe that it is consistent with the neighborhood context, zone district purpose and intent statements as written into the code. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant team is here as well. Bless you.
Thank you all. Oof, sneezing attack. We have one individual signed up to speak this evening. If you are hearing person after your name is called. Recording in progress.
Yes, good evening, members of council, those watching at home. This is round two. Uh, my name is Jessica Shawn-Perris, and I'm representative for Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Community for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the Northeast Denver Residents Council, Frontline Black News, the Revolutionary Agenda, Shabaka Shabaka Experience, and hence, and I reside at the CCH-owned Fusion Studios in Chantel Lewis's district of District 8. Okay, round two, council. Um, usual questions from me. Y'all should be used to this by now. Um, what is actually gonna be put here? Um, at the bo, is this gonna be at the bottom of the building? That's already been pre-existently built. Is this allowance or allowances of commercial in the bottom section of the building versus the whole building as a whole? That wasn't really made clear during the presentation. It was mentioned a little bit about the ground floor activation, but it was limited, uh, the rest of the building. So I'd like to know that, is it gonna be strictly commercial? Is it gonna be residential? Um, is it gonna be mixed, um, like you're saying, commercial and real estate? I didn't get that at all from the presentation of what exactly it was gonna be. It just alluded to it might be this, but just to, uh, clarify, uh, what is being proposed here? And then, um, has there been a, uh, a neighborhood or a community benefits agreement with the surrounding neighborhoods of the central corridor of Denver? Um, it looks like the RNOs were, um, in support of it. Also, I'm kinda surprised this is not a district. Um, usually when y'all started all this rampant gentrification of the city, y'all put in districts before you went ahead and, and did the gentrification. So I know this is city center, so this, this area per se hasn't been gentrified, but the surrounding areas around it have, especially when you're talking about the Highlands and, um, areas to the northwest of the proposed site of this rezoning. And has there been a parking study done? Um, I heard something about the headlights, uh, they wanted to have the parking facing a certain direction, so it wasn't blinding people. Um, so if someone can answer those questions. Oh yeah, also a rail study. Has there been a rail study? Because that was also mentioned during the presentation that this is a long, a heavily, um, um, transported area, um, with the trains, not just the light rails, but the other trains as well. If someone could please answer those questions, I would greatly appreciate it. All right, thanks. I'll see y'all on the next one.
Recording in progress.
Now, Tony, could you go into a little more detail on the differences? Um, the, uh, rezoning is being sought in order to allow a broader range of, uh, uses than the PUD requires. And in the staff report, if I'm remembering it correctly, is, uh, the, the restrictions are mostly square footage, a maximum square footage of retail type uses. But what are the types of uses that are broader? What is the range broader under this new zone than under the PUD?
Yeah, so this entire application came about because, uh, this commercial property had a vacancy, um, and they contracted with, uh, a veterinarian to occupy that space. Uh, and then found out that animal, uh, services are not unallowed use within their PUD. So you couldn't operate a dog groomer or a vet. And, uh, the Denver zoning code generally allows a broader range of commercial uses than our former districts used to, and this kind of reflects that. So it's nothing outside of, um, you know, the norm where we would say like, oh, there isn't, you know, a cement factory, and now you could have a cement factory. It's, it's more narrow than that in that, you know, they could operate a, a dog grooming business.
Thank you. I suspected that would be the case. It's that the PUD is much more restrictive, not that, not that the broad, much broader range is unusual at all.
Yeah.
But that the, uh, PUD, the restrictions were what was unusual there.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hines?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Councilmember Flynn stole my bark. Um, I was actually going to ask the applicant, um, a little bit about, uh, you know, what the, the plans were with the building. Is the applicant here, by any chance? I'll just ask, uh, ask you to come forward. And if you'll let us know who you are.
Good evening. My name's Jordan Kind. I'm the property manager and I work on, uh, behalf of Hines and Invesco.
Did you catch another little, uh, wonderful, uh, uh, connection here? My name is also Hines, yes. So, uh, so as we saw in the, in the presentation, there's a building here already, correct?
Correct.
And, uh, do you plan to do, do you plan to demolish it or, uh, do you plan to keep it?
No, it's a fully occupied, uh, building by DeVita and Salesforce right now. It's just a corner retail space where, um, we're trying to fill the occupancy, um, and we're speaking with a few other vets at this time, hoping that eventually we'll be able to get one in that area.
And, um, uh, and have, uh, uh, because it's fully occupied, you don't have any interest right, at least right now, and, um, I know that there were some comments in the, um, uh, the RNO, uh, in the RNO comments they were talking about if it were converted to residential, um, you don't have any plans to do that right now.
No.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, correct.
Uh, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember. See no other colleagues in the queue? The public hearing is closed. Do we have comments by members of council on Council Bill 241491? Councilmember Hines?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I have, uh, heard a couple people say that I am the, um, the, the council member most interested in pets. And, um, uh, and so when I saw that this, uh, this email came, um, uh, for picking Perfect Ten to locate your, your, uh, your building because, um, uh, certainly I was on the, I served on the board of the Dumb Friends League for a few years. Um, I I know that our district has far more, uh, dogs than kids. Um, apparently you've done the analysis as well and have realized that, uh, um, that, that people, uh, really need a, um, uh, more access to veterinary care. Uh, we all frankly need more access to veterinary care. We don't have enough veterinarians, uh, here in Colorado and, and beyond, um, but that a, um, a property manager and a, and a building owner is willing to go through a rezoning, uh, you know, um, a frustrating, long, arduous process, uh, for pets, uh, is pretty freaking awesome. So, uh, so I do want to thank you for, uh, for doing this process, for undergoing the process. Um, and so just to be clear, um, we have to legally vote on five criteria. Uh, whether you do or don't like dogs is not one of those criteria or, uh, but, but certainly, um, I just do want to, uh, provide a little bit of context as to why, uh, we're considering this rezoning now. I'm sure that, uh, uh, the property manager and owner, um, are not as interested in moving, um, zoning out of Chapter 59 as the city is. Um, that's another added bonus that we get here. And, um, and then I would just also, uh, like to share, because this is a CMX 20, I know, I think that many districts, or many city council members would shy away of something that's 20 stories. Um, I, I know that in 2019, uh, when I was, um, a candidate for this seat, my opponent sent out a mailer to the entire district and said, "Will Chris Hines rezone your building to this?" And it was something like 50-plus story buildings. Um, we're still not there. This is only 20 stories. But if we're gonna put, um, a 20-story building anywhere or zoning for a 20-story building, um, anywhere in the city, I think that downtown and Union Station make a great, uh, opportunity to, uh, to have that rezoning. So I want to thank the applicants for, uh, for looping us in early in the process, so early that I forgot about it. So thank you for reminding that, uh, me that we did have the, uh, the conversation early in the process. And, uh, and I want to thank you for your commitment to, um, uh, to your community. And, uh, and I want to thank you for your commitment to, um, uh, to your community and to our community. And, um, and thank you for also reaching out to our, our neighborhood organizations who have also provided support. So I'll be, uh, yes, I hope my colleagues vote yes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more comments by members of council. Mr. Secretary will call on Council Bill twenty-four fourteen ninety-one.
Alvedres? Flynn?
Aye.
Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Lewis?
Aye.
Parity?
Aye.
Ramiro Campbell?
Aye.
Torres?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Mr. Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. Council Bill twenty-four fourteen ninety-one has passed. Councilmember Gonzalez Gutierrez, will you please put Council Bill twenty-four fifteen eighty-one, a bill for an ordinance changing the zoning classification for ten ninety North Hooker Street in Villa Park, on the floor for final passage? I move that Council Bill twenty-four fifteen eighty-one be placed upon final consideration and do pass. It has been moved and seconded. The required public hearing for Council Bill twenty-four fifteen eighty-one is open. Will you please have the staff report? We're going three to three tonight with you, Tony.
Yeah.
I know, the tri vector. Go ahead.
Alright, yeah, so I'm Tony LaChuga, uh, with Community Planning and Development, and I'm here to present the private applicant proposed change to the zoning classification at ten ninety North Hooker Street. Um, and before we dive in, I want to acknowledge that when this process started, the property was ESUD one X. Through our, uh, adoption, through your adoption of ADUs in Denver, uh, the property is now ESUD X, uh, seeking to go to URH two point five. Um, I also want to begin by saying, as I'm sure you're all aware, on October tenth, twenty twenty-four, Community Planning and Development issued the West Area Plan Rezoning Implementation Approach Policy Memo, which outlines issues related to displacement and increased development pressures in West Denver. Part of that was addressing affordable housing and reducing involuntary displacement as key recommendations in the West Area Plan and in our citywide minds. Um, and our goal is to implement that vision comprehensively. Um, the memo notes that CPD has found that potential rezonings of single-unit districts to higher-intensity districts in the West Area Plan are not consistent with the intent of adopted plans until further stabilization programs, tools, and regulatory changes in place. However, as required by the Denver zoning code, CPD issued a recommendation for this rezoning application at the time of planning. The recommendation of approval was made on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, and the predate, and predated the creation of that West Area Plan memo. And so I'll be presenting that staff recommendation for approval that was issued on August twenty-seventh. So the request itself is to take this property outlined in red right here, right at the intersection of, uh, Hooker Street and Twelfth Avenue. Um, it's a standard, uh, zone lot of six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet and currently contains an eight hundred and sixty-nine square foot, single-story, single-unit residential. You notice it's just south of Lakewood Gulch, um, proximate to the new transit line that runs through there, as well as Paco Sanchez Park.
Yep.
My children's favorite park.
This is literally on the other side where.
Uh, its location is in Council District Three, represented by Councilmember Torres. And it's located right here in the Villa Park statistical neighborhood. And you can see on this map its proximity to those transit lines, um, north of Sixth Avenue, west of I twenty-five. Um, and this is again the property. You can see its current zoning is ESUD X, um, and they're proposing a URH two point five. Um, the current zoning allows building, the suburban house and urban house building forms. Um, it is close to additional ESUD X. You can see the higher-intensity CMX districts along Federal to the east. You can see some ERH two point five located farther to the west. And just on the edge of that map, you can see where that T is located is the, the transit stop for the, uh, the tra- the train line that goes out towards Golden. What they're requesting is the URH two point five. That stands for urban rowhouse up to two point five stories. And this is intended to provide safe, active pedestrian scaled buildings that contribute positively to the established neighborhood. And their intent is to promote and protect residential neighborhoods within the character of the urban neighborhood context. It does so by allowing the urban house and then a slightly more intense duplex, townhouse, or rowhouse building forms. In terms of context, you can see this neighborhood is largely single-unit residential, especially in the proximate blocks. As you move to the west, you see some more multi-unit residential, a couple of two units. Um, to the north, you can see higher-intensity multi-unit residential, uh, north of the gulch, um, and to the, uh, just north of the train station. And then you'll notice, uh, the multicolored federal boulevard with lots of office, commercial retail, um, and mixed-use buildings. So in terms of process, um, this one had its information on notice go out in mid-June of twenty twenty-four. We had our planning board in early September. Um, it was delayed for a little while before being brought to the Ludi Committee in November. And it, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot to update the date there. It's obviously not Jan-, uh, December sixteenth. Um, in terms of planning board, they held their hearing in early September. They voted unanimously to recommend approval, finding that it met our plan guidance. And public comments, um, as of tonight, we've received no, uh, comments from the applicable RNOs in the area. We have received two comments from nearby neighbors. Uh, both of them voiced their opposition, uh, based on the size of potential development, concerns about privacy, property values, property taxes, increased traffic, um, as well as displacement of vulnerable populations, uh, and the impact on the overall quality of life. So we'll dive into the review criteria. Again, we're mandated to look at all five and considering consistency, uh, um, the appropriateness of a request, the first of which is consistency with adopted plans. And here, we're very lucky that we have the two citywide plans and the very recently adopted West Area Plan. Starting with Complan twenty forty, we did find that it was consistent with a number of the goals, um, in terms of being equitable, affordable, and inclusive. This would allow for the creation of a greater mix of housing options in every neighborhood and for all individuals and families. In terms of creating strong and authentic neighborhoods, we believe that the new district would ensure that neighbors are, neighborhoods are offered a mix of housing types and services that would serve a diverse population. And in terms of being environmentally resilient, we believe that this would promote infill development where we already have infrastructure and services at this. Turning to Blueprint Denver, our city's, uh, citywide land use plan. So Blueprint Denver calls for this property to have an urban neighborhood context, which it currently has and would have under, or, I'm sorry, doesn't have in the proposed, in the current zone district, but would have in its proposed zone district. Um, so urban neighborhoods are meant to be safe, pedestrian scales enhance the convenience of walking, shopping, and gathering. The transition to a U district, we do believe would be, um, appropriate and consistent with this canon recommendation. In terms of future place types, uh, Blueprint Denver calls for this to be low-medium residential. And low-medium residential says that it should call for a mix of low to mid-scale multi-unit residential options, and generally they should be three stories or less. Um, the transition to URH two point five aligns with that by allowing those low to mid-scale multi-unit residential at a height that is lower than three stories. And in terms of future growth, this is considered all of the areas of the city where we expect to see the lowest intensity growth in both housing and new employment, but this subtle change in the allowed density could create, help us achieve that. Twenty percent of new housing in these types of areas. And now we'll turn to the West Area Plan, um, which in its land use recommendations, um, mirrors what Blueprint Denver recommends. And that's what we looked at. Um, it recommends that this be an urban neighborhood, so that transition from the E district to the U district. It recommends that it have low-medium residential, which again mirrors that same language of low to mid-scale multi-unit up to three stories. And in height, it again is recommending up to three stories, um, as sort of the future base height guidance map. And so we believe that the URH two point five did in fact meet, um, the recommendations of our, our land use guidance. We believe it would result in uniformity of district regulations and would further public health, safety, and welfare through the implementation of our plans, and by increasing allowed housing density near transit and amenities. And that there would be a justifying circumstance through implementing our adopted plans to transition to that U district and the higher intensity, uh, by allowing increased development and investments, uh, near infrastructure. And we find that it is consistent with the neighborhood context, zone district purpose, and intense statements. Um, and so finding that it does meet those criteria, we may see CPD, um, issued this recommendation of approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions, as well as the applicant is here to answer questions.
Thank you so much, Tony. We have two individuals signed up to speak this evening. If you are here in person after your name is called, please make your way up to the front bench. If you are in Zoom, please accept the promotion when called upon. First up, we have Jesse Parrish. Recording in progress.
All right, round three, City Council. Um, my name is Jesse LaShawn Parrish and I'm representative for Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Committee for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the Northeast Denver Residents Council, Frontline Black News, uh, Shabaka's Black Experience Enhanced and Revolutionary Agenda. And I reside at the CCH-owned Fusion Studios, which needs a second, a third look at, in Chantel Lewis's District, uh, District Eight. Alright, council, I'm gonna make this short. I have the same concerns that the people that called this area home for over ten years, for whole generations, uh, share as well. Um, this, these rezonings that the councilperson has been allowing over the years, that I've been attending City Council in the, in her previous, her predecessor, who is now the clerk and recorder, um, have not been bettering the health, safety, and wellness of the people that called this area traditionally home. So she had, uh, the councilwoman has some explaining to do on that. I will do recall a rezoning similar to this, end of, um, the last council's term. And the community was definitely in, um, opposition of it and the council at that time still went through with it. So here we are years later with a similar one, and the community is still voicing their concerns and as per usual, at least of my time of attending City Council meetings, which is almost a decade now, um, y'all are just gonna go through with it anyway. I have the usual questions that I always have when it comes to these kind of rezonings. What is gonna be the AMI level for this proposed rowhouse? Uh, if you ask me, is not benefiting the, uh, Architami level, affordability level, uh, NEST study done on the impacts that this may cause, along with several other rezonings, I just mentioned one, have caused to cause rampant gentrification and ethnic cleansing of the area? We don't need any more unjustified consequences from these rezoning City Council. Um, has there been a traffic study done? And has there been a group or community benefits agreement signed with the local RNOs? If someone, mainly the councilwoman that represents this district, could answer those questions, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you, and I'll see y'all next, next time. Happy birthday to me on Thursday.
Thank you, Jesse. Happy birthday. Next up, we have. Recording in progress.
Members of council, my elders and those before me for allowing me to speak here today. Um, Jaime Aguilar, nine five eight Julian Street. I've lived in this West Denver home for the majority of my twenty-one winters living here in Colorado. And I'm heavily involved with my Villa Park community as an active member of the RNO, and I serve as the president of the board. I am here in opposition of rezoning this naturally occurring, affordable, habitable house. Together with community in the past, we have worked with owners, developers, and applicants in some very good ways. Look around the block on Julian Street. We had conversations, understandings, arguments, agreements. As a matter of fact, that was the last time I was able to address this city council body. But we worked together. They even heard us. Like, I was here in opposition, and without an agreement, you know, we get, um, our neighborhood priorities of quality, affordable housing, and the same desires that these new LLCs coming into our neighborhood want, but to develop the land for generational wealth. Those were the conversations we were having. Nowadays, we're lucky to meet with the contractor who's submitting the application. Things have really changed with engagement. We used to have an equity analysis about displacement. We were used to engaging with landowners and their plans. In neighborhood planning, we were told that NEST was there to prioritize policy to stabilize our neighborhood. I understood that as a, are we building homes to serve the current community? It also felt like because of this lack of use of an equity index, that homes in this immediate area are increasing in property values superficially, and it's forcing people out or to illegal actions with their properties. This need to create some sort of pathways to affordability deserves all of your attention. We've already heard that high-quality materials isn't going to happen and be affordable. In the sixty years of being this, of, uh, ago in this neighborhood, we were under the same position of needing affordable housing. And these units were made not to withstand the test of time, and we're responding to that need again. We're also responding to these deteriorating materials that were made, used to make these houses. People are paying a lot for these homes. Many, including the ones you see down the road from this proposed area on the corner that are twelve foot wide on King Street with the same park view. I see more short, short-term Airbnbs, multi-units with multi-individuals, not families, in these units to cover the note. I mean, I understand at least the very bottom of borrow as much as you can and charge as much as you can for rent as a part of real estate, as a strategy for a business. But what I want this body and real estate to understand are the social and cultural impacts of neighborhood disruption. Gentrification and displacement are not making the neighborhood better as these developers are telling us. We have a strong history within these social and physical spaces that contribute to our physical, psychological, cultural, and economic well-being. I urge you to vote no and examine the three-plus years of work we put into the West Area Plan and how it contemplates future designs.
For your comments.
And overlays.
Thank you. You, you ran out of three minutes. Thank you for your comments.
Said no.
Um, that concludes our speakers. Are there questions from members of council on Council Bill twenty-four fifteen eighty-one? Councilwoman Parrish?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, uh, thank you, Tony, and I appreciate you giving, um, kind of a preamble around the memo that was issued in October. Um, I know we've, I've, I've shared that with council members when that was released. Um, so, uh, let me just, um, ask Nick, um, uh, who's representing the, or, I think you're representing the applicant. Um, if any, anything's changed, um, since it came through planning board, you know, I, I shared a planning board, um, that I was not likely to support it based on the conversations that we've been having with CPD, um, and, and the memo, and I can describe that a little bit more in my comments later.
Sure. Um, is there a question?
Yeah, has anything changed, um, for the application? I know you had emailed me, um, after planning board that you might do a survey. Um, and so I was, I just wasn't sure if there, if you gleaned anything from that or, um, or any other conversations.
I think a lot has changed. It seems like a lot's changed in the neighborhood. Um, so the way we've digested on the fly, um, has changed. We, we originally went into pre-application in March. So at that point, it was actually quite consistent. You guys spent years on the West Area Plan. It had clear guidance for increased density, in this case along, uh, Gulch, north of Fifth Avenue.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you've, you've approved many rezons in this area. Almost all of them have gotten approved. So to us, it was quite clear, and by us, in this case, the applicant, my client, so, the owner of the property. Um, so I think there was clear precedence, and that's why you continue to get these rezons. Um, I believe the memo in October,
I don't know until after.
Brought a problem to a head, but not clarity in regards to next steps. So that's obviously gonna take time. I think this project in particular, the way we've decided to go about it, we presume that's gonna take time. It's already been four, almost five months. We haven't heard anything from anybody. Uh, we reached out. Nobody's necessarily getting an answer, so. So I think, um, we digested that data. I did the only thing I thought we could do internally on the private level, which was I created a small survey to hopefully gain what I needed to know to make an informed decision what the understanding of affordability meant to the people that lived in the area. So there were some high-level questions that revolved anything from, what is affordability to you? What do you think the responsibility is of private developers at this smaller scale? For reference, it's a fifty-wide lot on Corner Lot. Most likely, if it got rezoned, it'd be a five-unit, um, brick home. And I, and I heart back to, I think you guys, for instance, we're gonna raise start construction on ten eighty-five Lowell, which is a rezone you guys approved on a corner lot, eight units. Um, it's all brick. It's beautiful. It's gonna be a lovely building. You guys are gonna really like it. So, Jaime, we heard you guys in the past year. It's gonna be a great building. Um, I'm stick, sticking on board with the, even though it's switched hands, I'm sticking on board with the builder. Um, we're trying to care to a reason that developers can still do what they do for a living. Um, that being said, I, I think the way I then wanted to digest this moving forward was the same reason that we went into the rezone. We have these criteria to hit. I think the main two that we hear are the, um, welfare and, uh, some big keywords that go along with that and for betterment of the community is displacement. This particular house is a short-term rental for the past year. So displacement in that regards for this particular lot, I didn't see as a huge challenge. Now, there's some resonance to that of increased property values with work, et cetera, et cetera, displacement. That's a bigger thing that I can't talk about for a five-year project because, um, I'm happy to, in my skills, but it is what it is. The, um, I think this project has, the other thing I took from our Ludi meeting with, um, Councilperson Sandoval and Councilperson Torres was this one in particular is east of a lot of the other rezones you guys have approved. So I think it has the challenge of being almost a first in this area, even though it's right on the context relative to the West Area Plan of increased density. To me, it, it's a tough context, but at the same time, that means it's more opportunity in my mind. You have an extremely willing applicant to do a good building, just like ten eighty-five Lowell is gonna be. And the challenge is, um, with that memo that came out, we started this in March. I feel like we're meeting all the criteria. The affordable housing linkage fee for this project alone is gonna be over fifty thousand dollars. That's what today is. Uh, we're still actually, even if we, so I only high-level designed this thing. We haven't designed it yet. We're two years out from construction, so. So who knows what affordable housing fees are gonna be then? Um, if I had to guess, easily ten to twelve dollars a square foot, uh, which is seventy-five, a hundred thousand dollars in fees, just fees. So developers know, that's a make or break for the project. So I, I think what, and I emailed, and I know you can't speak on an ongoing project, so hopefully you can have more constructive conversations after this. I think it would be wiser if these linkage fees had the opportunity to be honed in to the relative lot of which you're building on. Um, it, it makes a lot of sense to me. And then you can directly invest in your community with those fees.
Thank you, Nick.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, Madam President, I don't have other questions necessarily. Um, I don't know if other council members do, but I'll reserve more of my explanation around my vote in my comment time.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Romero Campbell. Go ahead with your questions.
Um, thank you, um, Madam President. Actually, I, it was more for, um, Jaime, when you came up and spoke, you were representing the RNO or or representing from your comments.
Hi, um, Jaime Aguilar, I was representing myself. I was just mentioning that I am on there. We did not have a chance to take a position as a neighborhood on it, so I'm speaking as Jaime Aguilar.
Okay. Um, and when you were speaking, um, you ran out of time. It sounded like you had the last part. I don't know if there was, if you wanted to complete your statement.
Um, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you for allowing me this time. Um, just to urge again to vote no and examine the three-plus years of work in the West Area Plan and how it actually contemplates future designs and overlays to have more positives than negatives around the form allowances, the house envelopes, for example. Because right now, it only allows affordable housing literally in this backyard of ten ninety Hooker. This is about community, not opportunity by owners who don't and won't even live here themselves.
He's got the same name as our husband.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Madam President. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, questions from members of Council. The public hearing is closed. Comments by members of Council. Councilman Torres.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so we've heard tonight CPD, um, on paper supports the application, but the significant issues, the memo, um, that came through shortly after that decision, um, that I think affects both my vote, um, but also how I'm looking at the future conversations we have about missing little housing. And it is the housing between two units and nine units, um, that expanding housing affordability does not cover. Um, it is, as Nick mentioned, um, where we've increased the linkage fee, that that goes into a central pot for the city and not back to this neighborhood, not back to that parcel. Um, we are opening up, um, that conversation. I took my briefing today, actually, about expanding housing options, um, in Denver. Uh, and I'm even looking independently at, um, how other cities are approaching anti-displacement and anti-gentrification through policy, through zoning, through land use. Because, um, this is a current, this is an issue now. It is an issue ten years old, um, in my district. For those of you that, um, live in and have represented Northwest Denver, um, you've seen it happen before your eyes. And so that's the, that's the space that we're in in West Area right now. We, uh, the West Area was built, yeah, the West Area Plan was built first in centering on what happened in the West Area, um, um, in the earlier middle part of the nineteen, nineteen hundreds with redlining and how that is always the precursor to what we see in gentrification trends and how we see neighborhoods, um, uh, displaced and residents. And it has no, no authority and no agency in what happens to their communities, um, in those, in those ways. And I think we're in a, um, unique space to do something about it, um, to partner with our, our city agency to make sure that we're doing as much as we can to stem that tide and give tools and options, um, not just to Nick and other property owners, but also to residents to know what that means for them. Um, and it, it really is that two-to-nine unit gap, um, because it's the two-to-nine units that will fully gentrify the West Side, um, if we aren't able to intervene, um, now. Um, I don't think it meets multiple criteria, um, consistency with adopted plans. We adopted the West Area Plan. What we are seeing in numbers is an, um, a dramatic disproportionate number of demo permits pulled in the West Area neighborhoods. Um, more rezonings are applied for in the West Area neighborhoods than citywide. Um, demographics are changing. This went from neighborhoods that were seventy percent people of color to forty-two, uh, in twelve years. And so there are, every signal is in front of us, and, um, I appreciate CPD being courageous to say we, we can't just keep, um, letting the call for density be the way that we approach affordability and displacement in Denver neighborhoods. And so, um, I do expect, um, me and everyone on this day is to take that very seriously in terms of, um, what other tools we're gonna be putting forward. And it's not just regulation, it's also how do we help get folks, um, to build affordable units when they develop? Um, and so I'm not, um, naive to the fact that we will see replacement of buildings, but we can't do that. Um, while we also make nothing available for residents who are currently able to afford what's there now, but cannot afford what would be built new. So, um, I think all of those, that, all of that responsibility is on our shoulders. Um, the other criteria, um, public health, safety, and welfare, um, until we provide a path toward affordability. And some of these, some of these items, I don't think that that criteria is met. And then justifying circumstances. The goals of the plan clearly state, um, very specific strategies and tools for affordability and aiming to stem displacement. So for those reasons, I'll be a no tonight. Um, and, uh, I know that we'll be coming back with a lot more dialogue, and Nick, um, I am open to conversation about what happens, not just to this property in the future, but, um, any other one that you look at in my district. Um, but this is, this is absolutely, I think, where we need to be in looking at how much our neighborhoods are turning over, especially these in the West Area. Um, so thank you, Madam President. I'll be a no.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
That's the first time I've ever seen a row, though.
Um, seeing no other comments in the queue. In March of twenty twenty-three, City Council adopted the West Area Plan. And the, in, within that plan, the West Area Plan thoughtfully planned for needed growth while emphasizing the need to pair new development with strategies that maintain and create affordability. That's page eight from the plan. The West Area Plan encourages evaluation of one-off applicant-driven rezonings to determine if they are a better fit for a quote legislative rezoning effort to make more effec- effective, effectively advance the vision and recommendation of the plan in quote, page fourteen. What's happening since the adoption of the West Area Plan that at the time I was, um, councilperson for West Area really participated in that, is that rezonings have come through in these six neighborhoods that, um, are approved, that have been approved without the tools in place envisioned by the plan, which only has exa- exacerbated gentrification. As it was mentioned, on October tenth, Community Planning and Development released the West Area Plan Rezoning Implementation Approach Policy Memo. And as it states in the memo, that individual rezonings from single unit to higher intensity districts in the West Area Plan boundaries are not aligned and adopted with city plans until, until new anti-displacement and affordability measure, measures are in place.
Yeah.
So I am a no on this because if we were to approve this rezoning, it would only contr- it would contradict the guidance within that memo. Um, also, I would like to comment that Jefferson Park in Council District One has a lot of, um, a form of housing that is about seven houses, eight houses on this, in the, in, in a row. And it had caught, it, it led to the, um, gentrification and displacement of Jefferson Park. It one, one time was eighty percent Latinos, and now it's one of my most gentrified communities. So as somebody, as a councilperson who has seen that, lived that, um, gone through that in my lifetime in Northwest Denver, I will, do not want that to happen in any other part of Denver. So with that, I ask my colleagues to please vote down this rezoning before us this evening. Seeing no other comments in the queue, Mr. Secretary, your call on Council Bill twenty-four fifteen eighty-one.
Alvedres? Flynn? Mary? Gonzalez Gutierrez?
Nay.
Hines?
No.
Cashman? Lewis?
Nay.
Parity? Romero Campbell?
Nay.
Torres?
No.
Watson?
Nay.
Madam President.
Nay. Mr. Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
Ten nays.
Ten nays. Council Bill twenty-four fifteen eighty-one has failed.
I'll professionally, but I did this.
Being there, no further business before this body. This meeting stands adjourned. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Ten nays. So they actually fucking listened for once. All right, y'all. So this is gonna conclude the City Council meeting, uh, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, join us in about three hours for Frontline Black News. In the meantime, make sure you like and subscribe to our Black Force Frontline Black News on YouTube and Facebook. The Revolutionary Agenda on YouTube and Facebook. And Chabaco's Black Experience Enhanced on Facebook and Twitter, now X dot com. So peace, love, white reparations, separations of black empowerment. Chan Krumen signing out. See y'all in about three hours on Frontline Black News. Oh, Sid, I am C.U.A. Kuhari. Thank you for tapping in. Peace.